Can I review the agenda? Are there any conflicts of interest or any objections to the agendas? Hearing none, it'll stand as presented. Um, Madam Mother, would you please read us the minutes of last meeting?
November seventh, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Rossburg Chairman presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozart, excuse me, Rossburg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved hiring of Mike Boat, Maintenance Employee One, Engineer's Office. Tavon Ami, Director Recovery Center, M R H C, um, updated the board on some future progress with the opioid treatment. There are five programs offered to schools, sixth grade and up. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Schultz to approve a new hire policy, less than twelve months of employment effective today. Uh, five day, five vacation days at hire with no rollover and no payout pending HR. Um, voting aye, none, voting nay, Schultz, Dozart, Rossburg, Mulbauer, and Hayden motion did not pass. The board had a discussion with vacation holiday schedule. The board needs to do more research. No action was taken at this time during citizen input. The conference board, the conference board is meeting November thirteenth at six PM. On motion, July second, the board adjourned at eleven thirty-four AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Any additions, corrections, subtractions to the agenda? I'm pretty good. I'm very close to, actually that was what that. Actually, I was rid out, wrote out quite well, I thought. So.
I'm actually trying to add more details, so.
Worked good, I thought. Uh, so minutes will be approved as read. So, ma'am. Okay, Supervisors reports, uh, Mr. Dozart, would you like to begin?
I really don't have anything. Ty, I guess, uh, just briefly, Paul, and, uh, the Children's Imagination Station has got a couple of, uh, what do you want to say, I guess, uh, structures that they want to get rid of. They kind of get dinged when they get their surveys done because they're wood structures and kids gets, can get slippers or something like that. So they wanted to get rid of them and I paused and let me down there and we looked at them and I didn't tell them, uh, Eric Martins and between the city and the county together. They're going to take those structures out of the playground area and, um, that's really, I had a meeting last night for Wesco, but that was, I did make it to that because we had the other meeting, so, uh, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Any news on the log cabin?
I have not heard anything and I do not want to be associated with your log.
I don't.
I looked at it again this morning.
You looked at it this morning?
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna get my pickup truck and drill past it and.
Wouldn't it be great?
Put the bridge crew on, I think I could get that sucker to move out of town real fast.
It'd look so awesome by the Dow House and just add, you know.
I think it looked really good being that it came from Dow City and Dow City said part.
Well, that would be fine too, um, but let's just, but yeah.
Don't look bad where it's at.
Here's my question, how are we involved when it goes on the city park, wants to the city?
They don't have a dog in that fight.
Less conservation inside.
What?
It's all.
I just think. Besides the who's checkbook.
Yeah, there you go.
Ours is.
I just think that schoolhouse looks all lonely.
We could make like a village.
Just be lonely.
It could be like that village on the way up to Sturgis where people stop to take on the chores and make love and money.
Too funny.
It's just a thought.
Keep on thinking, girl.
All right. Uh, Mr. Dozart, uh, what do you have? Or excuse me, Mr. Mulbauer, what do you have?
Uh, not much. Uh, I had, there is an ISAC budgeting webinar coming up. I'm sure you guys have the email. There will be one Wednesday, December sixth, and then one Thursday, December seventh. It's just a webinar. Communities to address House file seven eighteen, the changes and how it's going to affect us. I registered for the one on the sixth, uh, sitting watching on.
Sixteen?
Six, uh, six and seven.
Six and seven. Now, the, the second one was kind of more like auditor oriented or is that, what did I read on the thought?
One's more of an expert and one is more of.
ISAC will be always two information, one of ours, one, one PM on Wednesday, December sixth, and one on Thursday, December seventh, on topic of two thousand twenty-five budgeting. Well, beginning budgeting will provide overview of county property tax, various funds, and the purposes of them will also cover the requirements put on the House files on eighteen.
Do you have a Chuck watch that or?
The second one will be budget process and new requirements.
I didn't know if you wanted.
The second one is the more experienced county auditors.
There you go. Yeah. That's where I did read the.
Um, so that's coming up. I think it's good to keep tabs on, register those changes. Then this week I have coming up tomorrow, I will not be able to do the popcorn because I will be in Des Moines for Board of Directors meeting. I'll be out there about eight, eight fifteen, ahead of our meeting.
That's on Thursday, Wednesday.
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
Yeah.
So then. And when we're gonna do the second date, that the next week?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
And then, uh, Thursday I have a region twelve meeting.
Fifteenth and the twenty-ninth. Do you have a region twelve?
Yes. That is about all I got.
So the popcorn thing is at eight thirty tomorrow?
Okay. I start.
Yeah, I'll look, I, I'll try to get here and have things ready to go so it's ready by nine. I don't think anybody helped to set up.
How long?
Wheezy said she was gonna have it all set up in her little wheezy can.
Yeah, sounds like it'll be set up in the hallway out there on the table.
So she can watch us on her wheezy can, she called her.
Okay.
What?
What time are you, you usually start noon?
Yeah, noon is one o'clockish, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so what do we do with the popcorn that we pop? We just, we just make it available for purchase.
We need to make donations.
Like last year, we made like twelve or thirteen hundred dollars for.
I guess, is it advertised? Was it on radio or?
I actually put, put it on.
I think Louise and Amy were gonna try to.
Get it on Facebook and stuff. That way hopefully some of the businesses uptown know we're doing it.
We said she was gonna call the banks and all the attorney's offices today to let them know. I guess she said they usually rent for eighty cents.
Yeah. So. We used to get about that.
Or would it be something that we could deliver to them? Just as an.
Present off of us, we could probably.
So, because I, I don't like to just stand around and do.
We ain't gonna send you around as sick as you are.
I might be better by tomorrow.
I'll be locked down for Thanksgiving.
I'm gonna over-medicate tonight and I'm gonna wake up feeling like a man. I just didn't like over-medicate. It's gonna be stronger than that.
So one thing I'll say about that is if you start delivering and somebody don't get their delivery to them, then they'll be all.
I, I see the hard burn with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a thing you learn here though, little good deed goes unpunished.
Had that happen a few times.
All right, let's just.
But, you know, they could grow up nothing. They could say, well, I grew up a.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you're giving your little free, as we stick to the delivery.
Could only get two bags in there at a time though.
I'm telling you. Hey, I'm telling you, I'm bringing Jerry's big old red, red pickup in that way.
Put your sneakers on and you can just jog around town and deliver.
I would love to.
No, that's, yeah.
They'd get my back here a little bit.
Pretty simple.
I'll tell you.
We're good guys.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Mulbauer?
No.
Kyle, do you?
Kyle, I think she was short last, was she short last?
She was short.
I did not bring all of that stuff with me.
Would you please, uh?
I'm, I'm gonna keep it short again. I did not bring all of the stuff I was gonna catch up on last week with me today. As just to take, we wanted to talk today, but I did have a little conversation with Dawn Nester this week and Alder.
How did that?
Very, very nice. You know, I kind of just wanted to hear from her how she feels things are going, so you know, just, uh, and she just really, it's just, there's so many unknown things, but, um, they have a meeting in January for the Advisory Board and she's going to recommend that they appoint me to that. So I'm gonna have to call some people and make sure that they vote, say I can.
Should be like lead advisor?
No, I'll just be sitting there helping out a little bit, uh, growing the seed, so, uh, but it's a, you know, you have to bring a name forward and then ask people to do it. So, uh, she said that, that meeting in January, she would bring that forward and try to get me on the advisory board. So I look forward to that and at least I'll be a little bit, you know, what's going on, uh, there in January. But, yeah, just wanted to kind of pick her brain on how she feels about things and, uh, it was really just, uh, you know, so many unknowns. Um, didn't get a real happy vibe about it, so I just figured I'd reach out and see if there's, if how Crawford County is doing, you know, and I think I'm gonna have, um, what's her name, Bishop, uh, right, the person, the gal that takes care of Crawford County is, we will have, uh, it's, it's spelled differently and maybe have her come and give us a report on how things are going next week. Yeah, it's okay with everybody.
The gal from Storm Lake?
Yeah, you know, she comes here and just kind of make sure that we're getting our fair share that, uh, are pretty into it. Do that, but otherwise it was kind of a slow week. Lot of, um, just kind of talking to people about some of these things that are on our agenda to see how they feel about, um, maybe some changes to vacations and the thirty-seven and a half hour work week, you know, with the general taxpayer, what they know about that. They actually don't know anything about it and we're just, you know, I don't know how it works and how, I know how that started, but I don't know. How one comes to work at eight o'clock and leaves at four thirty and calls it a forty-hour week, which is when we signed the last hire. It said that they were being hired for a forty-hour week. So I don't know how that worked. I have to look into it. So just little things like that going on, but, uh, um, it's not like pretty much no official meeting. There it is. And it needed to go to our conference board meeting last night. I thought went well, uh, replacing a, what, it's been twenty-seven years? Is that the number? Blaine.
Ninety-eight, yeah. You left from ninety-seven to the, or the process.
I, I thought he mentioned four people that were on that board last time, didn't he? Said Nepper.
We just had three.
You only had three?
Russell, Russ Lance is who the schools appointed.
Nepper was one.
What Nepper?
Nepper was one and then, uh.
Lance, and you?
No, he was just the school board representative. Right, I wasn't on the, I was, I made the motion from the schools.
Okay, okay, because I wrote those names down and I was like, that's four. Okay, so you were on the conference board and nominated.
I was on the conference board representing us as a school district.
Well, I was glad that we had our name to bring forward and that, uh, she had already agreed to serve on that, so we got that accomplished. I think the mayor's agreed on theirs last night.
That sounded like it.
You didn't think so?
No, I, when I was then signing for nine-one-one, that, uh, there was, it was contested by one or two of the mayors, so.
Oh, very good. Well, and, and part of that, I would think maybe not everybody needs to be from Dennison. You know, maybe they want to get somebody from another community and so I could, I could see that being a.
I was the original thought, but everyone, the dynamics of that office, I don't know if that.
I think I even had a mayor ask me if, if the person we were looking at was from that. I said, well, kind of living in Aggri.
I don't know if that's as important as, as long as they get the right fit.
You get somebody that'll put some effort into it.
Yeah.
So, how many people should be coming that represent the schools? Seems like we are lucky to get two.
I think each school district just.
Will be ISAC.
How many? Charter Oak?
We got a son.
Dennison, Manning, or Manella, and Arriba.
Should be four or five.
Four.
Should be five.
And even Dow City, right?
So do we have the name of who those people are that should be coming? I mean, it seems.
Duane should have that, or that office should have it because when, at a school board meeting, when they do their organizational meetings, they pick who's the representative and they let Duane know, so.
It just seems like there's just such a, uh, small.
I'm sure Derek would have been there last night, but he, I think he had a different meeting. He had to be at the way to come with the name, so.
And his three kids.
One hundred there from Manila.
Right, uh, but. My wife was there, yeah.
But then the one gal, you know, will be done in two weeks, so there'll be somebody new coming here.
Yep.
Yeah. How many of the mayors that usually come? I know Olver is, didn't run again, so that there will have new mayors coming on.
One was there last night, I believe.
Oh, one of the new ones.
Kid from Dow City, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Must have took over immediately.
They must, they may have appointed him.
Yeah, because their former mayor is now a city employee.
Oh, so does Mayor Pro Tem's kid come? I just believe that.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem.
Now, is it?
I think.
Is, well, I know there was that controversy at one point in time that it had to be, uh, pointed at a meeting or something that you can't just send them. So do you know the, the facts on that? Can you have your mayor Pro Tem come in your place without having it in, on the record in a meeting? Because that was an issue last year.
It's been to me like that issue was more prevalent at the nine-one-one meeting than at the, the conference board meeting. So.
You know, so I think we're moving along.
I think Pro Tems have been there at the conference board in the past. So.
Anyway, I'm glad that we're moving along on that because it will be a process to hire a new assessor. Not just any old buddy can apply for that job and so that, uh.
But I did question, there wasn't one that was brought up last night that the two people in his office currently do meet requirements, but are not on that list of states. So, uh, Seth has got all his requirements and Maddie could be a provisional one. She has a couple more classes and stuff. She has six tutors, but.
So how do you?
So that's good.
How do you get on the state list after that?
I, I don't, I just, I'm not sure. That's a good question, but I did ask if the people that are in his office currently are qualified or not qualified.
Don't you have to have so many years of?
Yep, and he said Seth meets the requirement.
I know Seth does, but I wonder how many other counties have similar, uh, individuals in their offices that have taken all the courses and classes and aren't currently assessers.
I think that's how Ida County got theirs because what he was, they, Maddie would be very similar to Ida County's, that provisional, you have whatever it is, six months a year to get these final classes to him, so.
And they wa, and they monitor that, the, the department or anything.
So how, how, you know, so what I got gathered last night is these hundred and four qualified people currently already have a job working in a county. And will we reach out to those people or will they hear about it and get back?
I understand it as they will be notified of a vacancy.
Right.
Or that will be announced on that webpage or whatever. Crawford County is short, necessary, so.
Going to be short, yeah.
Yep. That's how I understood it.
They didn't talk a lot about the interim, you know, if we don't get somebody hired by that, then it would be Terry, right?
Yep.
Yeah, just supervise the, the office down there temporarily, right? Don't somebody get fired? There surely gotta be somebody that's, between having two down here potentially plus.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what chances, Steve, when we're in another county it would be, but, uh, I said it's happened two or three times that I know of already.
It just seems kind of crazy that that's all there is in the state. Is, what did you say, a hundred and four last night?
Hundred and four, a hundred and five positions in the state, ninety-nine counties and.
I mean, because there are some city assessors out there.
High cities that have.
I could do that much money selling.
Don't want that hassle.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
That could change. The housing market crashes and.
The bad part about it is you give, every time taxes go up, this board and the assessor, people get their fingers pointed.
They do, but I think, you know, so much of it is dictated what you have to do and what you can do and, um, you know, with the, all of the GPS and, you know, now we've hired somebody to actually go door to door. There's, there's so much more going on than, than back in the day when you actually had the assessor at your door. Want to come in your house, you know, now it's people you don't even know from Sioux City saying, hey, I've been hired, so, uh, I mean, I don't know. But anyways, that's all I have basically.
Okay. Mr. Schultz?
Well, like this short and sweet, it'll give you time.
Don't we have Ethan coming early this week?
He might, yeah.
Yep, nine thirty.
We're doing fine.
Uh, yes, our meeting Friday coming up. They already talked about the popcorn tomorrow and twenty-nine. I snooped in the bottom, I'm cracking over in there last night. They're very darn classy.
They're sharp, aren't they?
Hope they get a little more obscure glass than that. You know, maybe they'll have the automatic darkening windows.
We're all family here. Just leave the door open.
Turn the light, turn the, the lock, which locks will say vacant or not, are open. Notice that later, maybe they turn that lock and the window will go dark. That'd be some, that's out there.
That's AI.
Yeah, so they're, they're getting really close. Looks like all the fixtures are in and some touch-up paint and finish the doors and.
This should be the last week.
Water.
Manager released to us.
I don't know if they're.
Hand dryers?
And they're working. They're nice hand dryers too. They warm up.
Actually dry in hand?
Well, it warms up right away.
And there it'll be the, the option.
Back to Brad.
We didn't get the Bode type toilets, I see.
Sorry.
It doesn't keep it.
We're not that fancy here.
Last thing I got, Adam Doral, did he reach out to you? He was gonna.
No.
He's building a new cattle barn and saw the Charter Oak and the existing driveway is just over the crest of the hill, but he wants to move it and take time of the whole hill down, so it's, which would give him, but Paul's been out there working with him and they can't. And I, I'm gonna talk to Paul about maybe go out there and look at it, look at him.
Sadness.
I went out and looked at it last night. You need five hundred foot on a fifty-five mile an hour highway.
It needs closer than that.
And you put it right on top of the hill. I don't know how high, you can't get any worse, but the way the hill is, I'm not, I think that's where they're struggling. But it's still safer, would be safer than where it's currently, I guess.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be a lot more traffic coming in and out of there.
Yeah, so where it sits today, it does meet the requirements?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
And those are some of the most dangerous when you have that lane right over a crest.
And especially when people are coming, they come in and.
And Adam was really understanding. He says, I'm, if that's what it is, that's what it is. He says, I guess, I know it'd be safer if we moved it. But he said that we can't do it due to legalities. We'll just have to live with it. But he said, I just don't want to quit until I've exhausted all my resources here.
We, we had a similar situation with my cousin Jared, if you remember that, we went down to his house.
Yeah.
Looked at that and it was, his lane was just right over that crest and.
Right, it's so dangerous.
And it got leveled out and it, now it's so, so much safer.
Then we, then we take part of the hill down though. We don't have that option of a paved road.
Yeah, I could say this.
Yes, we did take it down with, right.
So that's it, but I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go out, get ahold of Paul and go along, look at it. Maybe this afternoon, see how the day goes.
What, where is that at again?
About a mile and a half south of Charter Oak.
Straight there, big buddies.
Yeah, on a hundred and fortieth street. Buddy, honey.
Sorry.
You should just know.
The old Johansson farm.
Been there long enough.
You know where the old Johansson places, don't you?
Well, I will say I spent a lot of time in Charter Oak as a child, but I was in the backseat of a fifty seven Chevy.
Wow.
What are we supposed to take?
I mean, I'm worried you're. Oh, I was actually with sixteen, seventeen.
Spent most of my childhood growing up.
Say, Ty, before you you go on, you, I just have a question for Terry.
I'm done.
And that was on the planes that came out.
This one that you just signed?
We already signed?
Yes.
I just saw on all those election officials that were paid, it's all different amounts. Like, I just thought it'd be a consistent, you know, like, everybody gets.
The chair makes more, the chair makes twelve dollars an hour, everybody else makes eleven dollars an hour. Um, some made it to training, some didn't make it to training, mileage is different for everybody. Not the rate, but the number of miles that they pay for their house, they get paid.
House to the.
Um.
So, if they, when it sets.
Some split shifts, some did eight hours, you know, split a shift with somebody else and did like two eight hour shifts, that kind of stuff.
I just saw they were all different. I was just curious why. I thought it'd be more consistent, I guess, with the number, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and some delivered supplies back, so they had more hours, more time.
Okay.
More miles, whatever, all that kind of stuff, and they come from all over, so. The Dennison ones were a lot less miles than Manila or Charter Oak or Vale or Death City, so, yeah.
You got pretty solid list of people that you could call.
Pretty much. We have a few new ones every year, but.
I mean, there's always something.
We have some that are steady eddies, they're constant, yeah. Which is awesome, because then all they have to learn is the law changes. I mean, you still have to remember everything, but that tablet that we use that helps to, um, get us through some of those law changes, no requirements of a voter and different things like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't have a whole lot either, but I did have, uh, the ag committee had that just is this week and for Naco. And they mostly talked about was the farm bill stuff, and there's a CR, continuing resolution for the farm bill that's most likely going to be adopted. There's some there's still back and forth with the Senate on a couple little details, but then that would extend it for a year, and, uh, I'm trying to remember all some of those things that they, uh, were gonna add to it. Are there there, most of the stuff that's in it wasn't going to be taken away. Uh, there was some, there was, there was some de- debate on how much should be spent on SNAP, but now that's going to remain the same with the CR to get it through. There won't be any argument then on the the opposing side of these present speaker, but it did have a few of the Republicans and the more conservative ones probably weren't necessarily going for it, because they weren't going to address SNAP at all. But otherwise, you know, farm and the the crop insurances and all that kind of stuff, the critical of our our farm communities, if not farm communities, that was all gonna be in the CRs. That was the biggest, the biggest part, uh. Like I said, the SNAP stuff may not be happening. That was most of the discussion, you know, because it was the farm bill, obviously. And then they talked about getting some congressional leaders to come speak at our stuff. It was kind of a sh- a shorter, shorter little thing. Uh, they did have, I did have a quick meeting with the, uh, the military veterans affairs and everybody thanked for all the counties that painted their building green for Veterans Week and.
Our lights looked really good.
I thought so, too. Yeah, some of them get real elaborate, but they've got more money to be real elaborate. But, uh, um, we did place our, they were, they didn't get their legislative priorities done for ag, but, uh, they were working on that. The farm bill is obviously going to be on the top of the priorities. Um, we were, there was a lot of talk on on water supply, aquifers and all that stuff, because the whole nation. Some big one in North Dakota, some lady was talking about, the Zogalala extends pretty close up into there. I mean, I think it edges in there. But, uh, I I I was under the impression that it actually hadn't been sh- shrinking as much, maybe even gained a little bit. Now, that was what I'd heard outside of meetings, but, uh.
Excellent.
Anyway, I I, here was an interesting thing, I mean, just as a side point for our hand at all. I I really found it interesting. Where do you think the main majority of water gets into the Ogallala Aquifer? I mean, it's prime, I shouldn't say primary, but one of its main entrance, I just kind of caught me off guard. I wouldn't have thought there'd been that much that would get in it. Up in Sand Hills in Nebraska.
Sand, sand is very permeable and.
Yeah, so that was one of the main places it gets in. I just, you know, you don't, you think of it be like off the mountain snows or something, you know, since it's out that way, but that, I kind of, I I found that intriguing.
I say can't get water out of rock.
Yeah.
Blow blood out of it.
So, anyway, that was pretty interesting. Um, other than that, it's pretty much the same since balls here, let's go ahead and do this thing.
Yeah, I I don't have much to support either. Kind of even wondering about making copies of these, because there's not much on it. Uh, but.
Give them the hand of the.
We're 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 winding things down, yes. Uh, so, yeah, probably the biggest thing is the bridge is open on L fifty one, so, yeah.
Much, without much fanfare, but well received.
Yeah, I I haven't been over it yet, so, uh, I mean, I did drive over, but not at fifty five, sixty miles an hour, so it felt smooth to me, that short little deal that I did, but, uh, so that's good, you know, eventually we get there, uh, you know, it just, this one took a little longer, so.
Like I said, in a month, I can't remember, they were upset that they I'll be glad they got a nice bridge, you don't feel like you have to drive over it.
Yeah, you know, and if we happen to get that grant, can pave those shoulders, those those roads over there are gonna be.
Fantastic.
Nice, you know, they'll have that twenty eight foot paved top, so.
I think most people are very understanding. I had a number of people at the Island Breakfast. It's so great to have that bridge open and glad it got done and done right. I'd rather have it, take that at your time, so it is done right.
Very patient. I never had one, oh, anybody that was upset. They were just inquiring.
Yeah.
No one was upset, so, I mean, very patient, that's your point.
You mentioned that 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 grand hall, I I thought originally, we kind of thought in November, we might hear back. Is that still what you think?
Early December.
Early December.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like Christmas.
That could hopefully. See what happens.
I've lit a candle or two for it.
Well.
But I did.
Anyhow, uh, so, so, yeah, bridge is open. The, uh, mail shops are working on the walls today. I think they're implementing walls today, so that'll be good. It's great weather to get.
Beautiful, make more walls or get the concrete done, so I'm happy.
Yeah, and a great crew there, uh, down there on T Avenue, continue to work away at that. I mean, it's just it's been another good year. I don't know, we might get, it stays like this, we might get most of that T Avenue done this year.
So excellent.
We'll see what happens, but.
We're supposed to get the rain maybe this.
A little bit. I don't think it's gonna amount to much.
Well, you gotta have something locked down the doors.
There you go, yeah. Uh, R Avenue.
Can I ask something before we move on too far? Since we were talking about the bridge? Did did was Greg gonna go out there and do some major overhaul on that road now, the gravel, to get it kind of back to.
Or the detour route going?
Well, the 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 unofficial detour.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Awesome, that's a pretty good shape.
I mean, I I haven't been over them, but.
I just had a people, I just had somebody ask me about that. It was, it was kind of rough, and I thought it was pretty good, but I, it's been a couple weeks since I've been on it.
Um, yeah, I I haven't been out there, but I.
I guess go back to.
Yeah, yeah, they'll they'll be happy to.
Okay.
Um, so kind of talking about that, kind of getting off topic a little bit, but, you know, they're they're working on these utilities over here, the the fiber. You know, we had a number of different meetings with them about what what we're doing. But, um, you know, we like to have the line put into the wheel track and off, not on the shoulder in the grass, because you can at least fix it then if it becomes a problem and it's just, you know, they're using a dozer with a plow. A lot of the other ones that have done the work, they do it with vibratory plow on like a Vermeer.
Yeah.
Trencher type deal, you know, and so we've had some conversations with them about some of the roads and, you know, if only you have to pave the rock or gravel on this road and that sort of thing, and so you know, this morning we went out and took a look at some things, Sean and I, and there's, you know, the tubes sticking up and, you know, it's just part of the process. I mean, we're trying to get along with them because people want high speed internet, they want fiber, okay, you know, so we're trying to find that balance, but if you hear reports of, you know, the road.
Where where they doing that from?
Over east of Dennison, between Dennison and Vale, and they're gonna be working west town here, you know, probably next year, because we told them, we said, you know, well.
It's all wind, isn't it?
Uh, this is Western Iowa Network.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 when, and and so, uh, but anyhow, you know, they said, well, you know, we can go until we get four, and I said, no, you can go until you start destroying the roads, then we're done. But if that's three inches of rock, we're pulling up chunks, because we can't get that to you. So, we'll have to just kind of closely monitor it. We are, but it takes a lot of extra time working with those guys to, you know, for the format and dealing with that stuff, so right now.
So, Sean's dealing with them now and.
And then Damon will be.
Damon will get them in the.
In the spring, probably, yeah. So, you know, you have all this discussion about wind turbines and, you know, carbon pipelines, but these guys are actually plowing the road up for seventy miles at a time, you know.
So, they're right down the tire track, is where.
Well, we moved them a little closer to the edge of the grass, because it was so hard there, they were pulling up, you know, it was, it was kind of slabbing, and so we we allowed them to move over, but if they get off into the shoulder, well, then, you know, if you have water running along there and it starts to slough off, and you, there's no good way to fix that.
Yeah.
You know, at least here, it's in the roadway where we can, you know, work it, pressure, you know, roll it with the motor grater tire and roll a little material in there and blade it.
How deep do they go?
They're going like thirty six to forty two inches, and then they got a plow underneath every pulver, so every time there's a a core, they gotta dig a pit, bore, you know, whatever, so.
Sounds a little bit tiny to me.
It is, yeah. A lot of expense to get high speed internet to everybody, but that's just getting it brown, and they gotta get the services to all homes at some point. But it's, uh, like, that's important, so, oh, yeah, I threw one of those away. So, hopefully had those, you you know about that.
I remember when I sent the video, I thought, don't bother him about that.
Yeah, I know, so.
Well, I thought maybe that helped adjust your issues that you're dealing with right now.
Yeah, those probably aren't too bad.
Sean's out there checking, he could be driving one of them along.
They had to pick up, yeah, that concept never, never caught on very well. Our guys just didn't, didn't seem to.
Yeah.
What he said. It depends on where you're at, certain parts of the state where you have flat topography, you have different soils, they probably are pretty good. Option, but. Uh, Bridge Crew, they're on R Avenue, down down in your Nickel Woods. They're gonna spend, spend a span of the day and they get that bridge done, probably do some odd jobs. Wrapping, so, we're Thanksgiving, it's pretty close to wrapping it up, so, uh, roadside, I think Verdina was gonna go out and spray, uh, seed the rest of L fifty one. Uh, he tried to call me yesterday, but I wouldn't be able to take the call, and I I wouldn't be able to get in touch with him, so I don't know if that was all hydro seeded or not, but that's the last thing we're gonna do, and then we're gonna put everything away, so. Well, everything should be moved in good shape. The eight grant, um, I put that map up there last week, I forgot to tell you about it, but, uh, but anyhow, uh, so I did mark up, you know, one of the things, um, you know, again, when I first found out about this, it was, you know, at a conference a few years ago, and I thought it'd be really good, you know, we're gonna pave this, it'd be really good to kind of know before and after, you know. Then they put this grant in, got this federal money, and said, well, we're gonna throw a twenty four county, three miles, and he even talked to us, you know, so and that's okay, and they got the grant, uh, the the whole, the whole basis of that was that we didn't have to load this thing up and haul it, and so if you picture a big steel drum roller with rubber tires on it, but you've seen them, sheath foot rollers with tires on the back, they're self propelled. This is a steel drum, smooth drum. Smooth drum with tires on the back, so they just drive at a fast, it goes by seven eight miles an hour. And so their thought was, well, let's just do everything, we'll just keep driving, we won't have to load it, you know, but they're still gonna have to load it. There's so many areas where you just gotta have dead ends, that you gotta, you gotta haul it. But, well, you know, kind of your comment, you know, and I'm looking for input. Let's try to get it different areas of the county, you know, in addition to kind of getting roads, think we're gonna actually make that some impact on it. But, well, you know, this, this is a Penn Street over there, it's always a problem, so, well, let's just dump it off here. Up over, you know, we can get all of this, back drag a little bit, get all that, not have to load it. You know, so trying to kind of find areas, and down here, you know, this gets a little bit of the sampling of the soils down in that area. Okay, uh, here's one that we were looking at great and paving one day, at one time, but never. I get a lot of, you know, one first year, I take around here. So, um, you know, and then there's the areas around Dennison, that we dropped it off here, you know, we could, you could down, do all of this, you know, get that. You know, and then this is one that I just.
At O Avenue.
At O Avenue, this one that would be good, you know, so it give us a a a variety of different areas of the county, you know, we get the roads, and there's about a hundred miles here, so that's fifteen thousand dollars. We pay eighty three dollars a mile. It's a hundred fifty dollars a mile, so you'd pay eighty three hundred dollars for this. We still can be a player at a level not quite what they hold, and, you know, so you have basically, you know, all in white, you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Well, we have, well, they got their own truck.
Well, I was gonna throw that out, too, just saying, well, you know, we could, if you, if if it would save any money, I I don't know if the estimate was based on doing all miles and then for mile, you know, rate will go up. I don't know, uh, so, we can certainly call it, you know. And you drop them on here, wait till the end of the day, you know, this is probably almost an all day deal, then you have a lot to call them, you know, time. And then these other ones might be double a day, so.
It'd be pretty busy when you're working around Dennis.
Yeah, yeah, you know, that'd be a roll it, call it, roll it, call it, roll it, call it, I feel that I'd be more happy to offer that up. So, that's kind of where it landed, yeah. I want to see what you guys thought.
Two, three, a draw.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think running, do you think running more miles is gonna give you any more information that you need, or?
No, that's what I said in that initial call.
I think it'll be a lot of information that you want to have, you'll need to have. Yeah, probably computer to lock up and then.
Give me tremendous amount of data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That you'll have.
So, I, you'll pay off that. So, we'll make sense. And then, uh, here in about fifteen minutes, we have our hearing, so.
You get there, I don't know if it's your afternoon, it looks like.
I got a meeting with him at two.
Okay, I just, Adam go over each town today last night, he's.
Oh, the driveway.
Yeah, he said, he said, he can live with one hundred decisions, he just.
Yeah.
He's trying to exhaust all resources before.
Yeah, and I, you know, so we.
I'll, we, why don't I go out there and look at it?
So, he's got a highway property, he's got a driveway right now that doesn't meet site distance, and he'd like to move it to another location. It still doesn't meet site distance, but it's better than the one that he has.
For safety, though.
For safety, this is, you know, for your site distance, and so, you know, we met with him, we actually went out there, surveyed it, tried to figure out if there's any way.
I went out there, sat there last night, and it's like, where the flag is.
Yeah.
You know, it's the highest point on the hill, but you still you're not achieving that, but it's way safer than the current.
Than what he has, so, you know, I talked to Colin about it, and I said, well, Colin, you know, I mean, there's a part of me wants to make it safer, okay? But if we do it, it still doesn't meet criteria.
And then grandfather.
And there's an accident, then, you know, the first thing you're gonna get in a deposition is, well, what was the standard? Well, this was the standard, so, so you allow this driveway to be substandard, and now we had this accident. And I've explained that to Adam, I said, Adam, I'd love nothing more than to help you out, you're perfect, but I've got to look out for the county, and, you know.
Draw some paperwork, so it still won't meet standards, but.
They're still gonna, they're still gonna, you know. They're still gonna, they're still gonna, you know, yeah.
Like, I'm in the same boat, as you look at it now, it's like, well, moving it there was gonna be better.
Yeah.
But he's grandfathering in, so I'll look that out, honestly.
I don't have a good answer for it.
I don't either.
I'd like to help Adam out.
He already said he's making a snow trap down there, nowhere to cheat his driving.
Yeah, yeah. But it's on the geometry of the roadway, so it's a problem.
You can't take the top of the hill and make the road to make the.
No.
That's not his home place, that's just his, you know, needing operation.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, he's got, you know, children, they're helping the operation, they, they're gonna go in and out of there.
There'll be feet trucks going in there three times.
Once every lot.
Yeah, it's.
How long ago was that ordinance passed? I mean, how long has he been?
Well, the standards change, it's like geom- geometric cha- standards change for roadways, so.
And they change continually, what you're saying.
Yeah, they haven't changed since I've been here. I mean, it's, it's based on seats, it's based on the speed of the vehicle. And then what they call reactions is, you know, your perception, reaction time, how quickly can you stop when you see an object so high? And how, you know, so, so that determines, you're going fifty-five mile an hour, you see something and you have to have this much distance between that. To stop, your point of seeing it and then reacting, perception, reaction, stop. And, so you don't impact whatever that is.
You went past the driveway there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, there's some science to it. And the other, the other dilemma.
Paved road is that the, uh, that's all based on fifty-five mile an hour speed.
Gravel is not.
Gravel is a little bit less.
Paul, is there any hidden driveway signs now or is there, can we put up signage?
Um, you know, and we got one of those up by the north of Ricketts right now. Um, where the gentleman has been there for years and years and years. Where do you stop with that? This is my question, because.
Well, you're going up to experience to kind of draw something similar, where, where do you draw the line?
Yes, what's, it's just a little bit.
One hundred and fifty-five hundred.
Yeah, I mean. And so.
I didn't know if that's something that they, if they requested it, that we would do it or?
They do have some of those, but I've got one right now that I, I've offered to go out and look with the gentleman. But there's, that one actually, actually has, you know, it's probably a similar situation as far as site distance on a paved road. And the driveway's been there since they graded it, so I went back and did some research. And when they graded the road, they moved the driveway to get site distance. I'm guessing the standard was probably a little less then, you know, so they probably put it where it met standard, but now it's still, you know, sixty or seventy feet short of that. So, and they want a hidden driveway sign. It's been that way for forty-seven years.
Well, just whenever you can.
So I, I'd be more than happy to go out, I've met with Adam, but talked to him, Adam's been very, very polite and patient, you know.
Well, he was very polite yesterday when I talked to him, he said, I just wanna make sure that we've exhausted all resources.
You know, and we can bring Colin into the discussion again, you know. That's why my, my argument with Colin was, well, it makes it better, yeah, but it still doesn't protect us because it still doesn't meet the standard.
I definitely see that, even if you have a document.
How do you even make the standards in if the guy's got a facility there?
Well, you know, they, they can use the one they have.
Because it's grandfathered in.
It's there, yeah. Yeah, that's my understanding, I've never been involved in an actual case law situation, but my understanding is, is that, you know, as long as it's there, they can continue to use it because standards change, you know, so you can't just change everything, uh, you know, at the, you know. And so, so then, you know, the options are to move the entrance somewhere where there is, that'd be one ways to the north down that hill.
Yeah.
Which is not very good either, you could get site distance. Uh, or do you choose to build somewhere else?
So it's basically a risk management thing?
It is. And we had one here a number of years ago on E sixteen where they were building on a forty and they had a driveway there, it was on top of the hill. And, uh, I said that I recommend against this, didn't have very good site distance at all. And it, because of the geometry on that portion of E sixteen, that old geometry. And, uh, and so, uh, I wrote a letter, because they had an existing one, they could use it, I wrote a letter, told, sent it to them and said, this is not a good idea. And here's why, stuck in the file, and about six months later, I got a call from the feed company saying, hey, you gotta put signs up, that's a dangerous intersection. You know, driveway, and they built a hog confinement, and I sent him the letter and I never heard back from him, but I mean, you know. It's a problem, yeah. So, and then people have to decide whether they're willing to take that risk or not, I guess, I don't know. But our, our job is to predict the, the count of which.
Yes.
So. Yeah, sure. Um, yes, we'll be, we'll see how that turns out.
Thank you, sir.
Probably gonna like that whole pass with that turning lane.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, we tell.
See that?
Yeah, we just get a cab, but I didn't want that.
Turning lane in. Turning lane, turning lane.
Okay. We have next.
Hand of the votes.
Hand of the votes. Yeah, let's, let's get after that.
I love it here for that.
Actually, it's kind of interesting.
Moderately. It's kind of interesting.
It's only moderately tedious at times.
As long as everybody's paying attention, it's all.
Uh-oh.
So we're gonna start off the.
By drawing some names out of a hat.
Oh, really? I love this part. That's not really a hat.
Official, it's not, it's not.
I got my hat.
We should have.
I always got this couple.
I got my hat.
If yours is a hat, it doesn't matter to me.
The box is fine.
Dean will have to draw because I don't think my big mitts will fit in that box.
What are we drawing first?
So the city of Deloitte, um, has. Let me rack my brain here a second. It is a vote for five for the city of Deloitte. It is, oh, there it is.
What do you mean by about vote?
So it's a vote for five, they were, they, um.
Five people run?
They have five, um, seats on the ballot.
Okay.
And, um, there were only.
Anybody on the ballot?
Yeah, there were, there were five names on the ballot, but there were a number of write-ins. And, um, some of the names on the ballot are actually part of the name drawing. So there were three evident winners, highest vote getters, and like I said, they need five. So the tie, there are four people that were tied. Gloria Anderson, Connie Mulligan, Libby Schillerberg, and Matt Gosh. Um, so I need you to draw.
All right.
Two names.
Draw names out of the hat. Actually, I'm gonna have you draw all the names and we'll document the order they were drawn.
Okay.
Um, so one of the individuals that was a write-in, um, actually won the mayor and the council race. So that person needs to choose one, so that will create a vacancy.
So you'll have to have one of them people maybe.
Right, maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah. How about that?
All right.
I don't know who wants to draw, draw little hands.
Easy cake, all right.
Who's your first one?
Libby.
Libby, Libby, Libby.
Okay, draw another one, please.
Gloria Anderson.
And again, we'll just draw them all.
All right.
Well, I guess that's right, the number three, I'll know number four. Number three, and go ahead and draw it so we know.
Connie Mulligan's.
Perfect. Okay, so that was the city of Deloitte. Um, this is also the city of Ricketts, similar situation, I believe they were.
Thrown away.
They were, uh, yeah, we, I don't need them. Um, they were a vote for three, they had one name end up on the ballot. Um, there was one evident, besides the name on the ballot, a write-in that was another evident winner. Um, so yeah, we're gonna do same thing for them. Someone else wanna draw?
So we're just throwing up for one.
We're gonna, we're gonna draw all of them, just, and then, then you know everybody's name was in a hat too.
First one drawn is on the Ricketts City Council.
Yeah. If they want it.
Clayton Mars.
Clayton Mars.
Mars.
Martin.
Bryce Meyer. Ethan Croll, K R U L L, Croll. Mike Mart. Last but not least, Sherri Riley.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Four people left in Ricketts.
Everybody's on the council.
It's nice to see that many people.
I think so too, usually you got, you know, gonna have to.
They may not, I don't know.
They might not even know they got that many.
They may not know they were on the ballot. They had a writing candidate, they got a writing vote.
Yeah, so all this time, those people have, have to be in suspense of whether they got the job or not.
Suspense. Okay.
All right.
Do not mark on that, no, you don't need ink, do not mark on this.
Take the pen away from me.
Or you'll get hurt. Do not mark on it. So, not yet, you don't get to sign yet, you'll be probably the last one to sign.
Okay.
So let's start with that. So you're gonna do a lot of page turning, how about that? I know it's not fun, but it's easier, go ahead and get to the.
We are looking for city of Aryan.
Yeah, so he's DCAB, the precinct, keep going. Keep going. There you go.
No, do I read them off or does he read them off?
He'll read them off.
Okay, so just here.
Yep.
Danny Tendak, four. Jeff Stevens, three.
So it's under write-in, so you'll find that, the write-ins, if they, if they aren't the evident winner, they're listed under a category, basically. Right, and we don't do under and over votes, we only are doing votes for candidates.
So we're good on that.
Yep, so next page.
Right.
Over there, they're on both sides.
City Council at large. All write-ins. Teresa Brummers, five. Kenneth Beam, four. Correct. Michelle Stevens, three. Yep. Kristy Stevens and Mert Hanson with two. And Michael Wood, one. Okay, so.
One, and then go ahead and.
Don't just. What? No, he read, these are, they're correct.
A total of the rest of them.
Total right.
After those top three.
After the top three?
Yeah, total up what the rest of them are.
I should have like, I'm guessing five, total of five.
Yeah.
All right, that'll work.
Okay, next race.
Aspen Law. Mayor.
No, you go by yours, what, what race do you have?
Would be a lot easier if I could dictate.
I know, it would, that's what I said, you're gonna be page turning.
Mayor Buck Grove. All right, I'll have to get to this page. All right, I'll learn. All right.
It was hard.
Just, uh, no write-in candidates, Terry, uh, Collin, four. Yep, okay. Buck Grove, uh, City Council. Yep. We have, uh, on the ballot, Karen Collin with four. Michelle Stover with three, Aaron Schroeder with three. Write-in candidates, uh, Derek Schweri with three, Lois Johnson with three. All right.
Looks like the whole town up, Buck Grove voted.
I know, they're in there.
Okay. What's next one you got? Mayor, Dow City. Let me get to it. Let me get to it. Yeah, so.
They're alphabetical.
I know what, I'm working on it.
Trying to be helpful.
All right, now mayor for you. So on the ballot, city of, uh, Dow City, Landon Burhu, eighteen. Okay. Write-in candidates, Cody Meyer with thirty. Devin Garrett with eleven. Doyle Siglin with two, Lynn Hast and Kyle Aheart, one. Fifteen, all right, yeah, okay, all right. City Council, Dow City, on the ballot, Antonio Trevino, twenty-one. Uh, Bob Edelman, five. Might wanna check Bob Ed.
What?
Well.
No.
This one has a number written by instead of just lines. Mine says fifty-eight. That says fifty-eight.
I don't know why they use hash marks, because there's a number on the report that they get, so fifty-eight is the number.
Fifty-eight is the number.
Yeah.
And then Alec Hast, fifty-three. Okay.
Yeah.
And Sir, Sir Ilda, block two. Write-in candidates, Nathan Mueller, one. Yep, nice drive. What else do you got? I got, uh, Booyer Valley School District. You said they're in alphabetical, now we're.
I know, but they go by city, city, school, community college, in that order.
Okay, all right.
Don't.
So on the ballot, um, Craig Malone, one-on-one, Kim McAllister, seventy-three. Booyer Valley.
I got it, I, I know where the big one's at, so I'll go.
One-on-one and seventy-three, yep, okay. Booyer Valley School District, uh, Director, District Two, I guess I should say the one before was District One. Right. District Two, on the ballot, Steve Puck, seventy-seven, Benjamin Hanson, seventy-seven, all right? Okay. Um, Charter Oak View, School District.
It's a separate precinct.
Director at large. Director at large, I'm on it. On the ballot, Adam Haddam, zero. Election Day, yep, yep, whoop, no write-ins.
Election Day.
Nobody voted.
DCAB is your precinct.
No, we're in Charter Oak View, nobody voted.
No, you're in DCAB, he's DCAB.
How come you just said? Charter Oak View, School District, Director at Large.
The race, but he's DCAB precinct.
Oh.
DCAB. Okay.
Dow City Priest.
Yes.
Where do I see that on my sheet?
It's on your, on your book.
Oh, I see. We'll get through that together.
It's a learning experience.
I learn every year.
It's my job, not yours.
Charter Oak View School District, District One, Gregory Amundson and Melanie McAndrews, both tally zero. Yep.
Look at you, catching on.
Dennison at large, uh, School District at large, on the ballot, Derek Lambert, Lambert, nine, Michael Schramm, seven. Yep. Okay, IKM Manning School Director at large, on the ballot, Zachary Miners, five. Sarah Fernending and Mike Blurn, both tally zero. Five, zero.
Five, zero, zero.
Yeah, zero, zero, okay. All right, IKM Manning School, uh, Director District One A, on the ballot, Bridget Gore, two. TJ Sturk, zero.
What'd you give him, Gene?
And are you there, write-in? I'm showing all right, man. Okay, I had it named out. I don't have any ballots. IKM Manning School, uh, Director District Two A, on the ballot, David Heller, five, Emily Rasmussen, zero. Okay. IKM Manning School Director at large, on the ballot, Jeremy Puck, two, write-in, Phil Struckey, one. Yep. Iowa Western Community College Director District, on the ballot, Connie Formbet, four. Hold on. For Director District Eight. I got a lot of.
I see, we go precinct by precinct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Iowa Central Community College Director District Four, what do you have, zeros?
Uh, there's no D C A B on there. He doesn't have Iowa Central. What, how many did you?
Iowa Western.
Oh, there you go, Connie.
Connie was four.
Four.
Okay.
Western Iowa Tech Community College Director, District Nine, Aaron Muck, eighty-six.
That's what I'm showing.
Yep. And I K M Manning School Public Measure.
No, it's not pretty. I don't know why.
Yes, votes, zero. No votes, five.
I gotta find that page. Who put this together?
State?
No, for the school. They're here to help.
I know you weren't here. I just.
Eve Beth Williams.
Beth. T I.
W I N C I G. There's one. Two. Public Manager, all right.
Zero, zero yeses, five nos.
Okay.
Got it. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Ty, you're next.
I'm next.
I'll go back to the beginning, Mr. Kyle.
But they wanted it. Manny. Okay, I'm at Aspenwall. You want me to just start right at the front of it?
No. No, you just, you just start on your front and I'll follow you.
Okay.
What precinct are you?
Um, precinct, Southeast, uh, Southeast precinct.
Okay, that's just helpful for him, so he can make sure he looks at the right.
Right one.
Okay.
Yep.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Aspenwall Mayoral, Thomas Earlbeck, nineteen.
Okay.
Zero write-ins. Aspenwall City Council at large. Ted Jansen, seventeen. Do you want me to do it in order of the?
You do them in what order you're in.
Ted Jansen is seventeen. Cody Kircoff is nineteen. Fred Earlbeck is nineteen. Rick Warner, eighteen, and Carol Vile is eighteen. Zero write-ins.
Yeah, yeah.
We're rocking this party. I was paying attention. Still a minute. Okay, City of Manila, Mayoral Race.
You gotta get down to the Ms. here. We're slipping.
Should I flag him for you?
Well.
Maybe.
I'm not gonna say yes or no. I'm due for, you're the on three. Go ahead, Mayoral.
Mayoral Race in Manila, Corey Gaskell, one hundred and ninety-six, with nineteen write-ins.
Yep.
Um. Pat West, Westival, Westival?
Westival.
Westival. The German was trying to come through there. Festival, festival. All right, uh, ten?
They must be in the writing section there.
Yeah, I'm in the write-ins.
Do a total of your write-ins.
Just total of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nineteen. Okay, I don't need to write, read them all out. Somebody wanted Roger to be real busy. Okay, City of Manila. At large, City Council at large. Sam, who helped?
Rodakis.
Rodakis. Sam Rodakis is a hundred and thirty-four. And Tracy Reister. Fifty-one. Kurt Chapman, one twenty-six. Pam Sebring, one hundred. Lana Georgius, one thirty. Courtney Webke, sixty-five, and four write-ins.
Yep.
You know, you put a measure on your ballot, well, it gets people to the voting booth then. You need to have a measure every year. Okay, next one over is our Weaver City School Director-at-large. Um, there's three people on the ballot.
Weaver, Elvira Music. Elvira, are we with a school director at?
At-large.
At-large.
School Director, Mark.
Okay.
Um, there's three people, Denise Rolliger, Greg Oser, and Brad Henners, and all got zero, zero, and zero write-ins. Zero, 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 zero.
Yep.
Okay, next would be office title is, uh, Dennison School Director-at-large.
D C V.
You're amazing. We should have those on the wall.
Yeah. Better have an elementary school. Southeast District.
Okay.
Dennison School District, at-large.
Derek Lambert, zero. Michael Schrum, one. Write-in, zero.
Yep, that's what I'm showing. What else you got?
Next would be I K M Manning School Director-at-large.
At-large is to fill a vacancy or just at-large?
It said that large.
Well, I'll go with that.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, Mike Bloom, Blum, ninety-six. Zachary Miners.
Nope, we gotta stay it up.
What is it? What is the race?
It says.
What district is it?
I, Michael Blum.
No.
At-large.
On the race, what does it say?
I K M Manning School Director-at-large.
Not the one to fill a vacancy. There's two of them.
Oh, there we go. I thought it said a district, sorry.
Yep, you're good.
So start over.
Michael Blum.
Mike Blum, ninety-six. Zachary Miners, two fifty-eight.
Okay.
Sarah Fernending, sixty-four.
Total of write-ins.
Five in, five write-ins.
All right.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, next is I K M School Director, District one A.
These are the ones that are bad.
Yeah. All right, one A, go for it.
One A, Bridget Gore is one twenty-eight. T J Sterk, one ninety-seven, and the write-ins were nine.
All right.
All right?
Yes.
Uh. Next is I K M School Director, District two A.
I'm, I'm with you.
All right. David Heller, two twenty-nine. Amelia Rasmussen, one eighty-eight, and two write-ins.
Okay. That's the at-large one.
This is the at-large T F, T F V. Uh, Jeremy Puck, two seventy-one, thirty-seven write-ins.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Donald Trump.
Oh.
Just kind of curious, when you go through and there was that many write-ins without, who the heck was already wrote in and Donald Trump's on there? Anyway. Uh. Des Moines Area Community College Director, District Three.
Deema.
Deema. District Three. Jim Gossett, fifty-one.
All right, looks like he's got it.
Yes, sir. Uh, Western Iowa Tech Community College Director, District Nine.
District Nine. All right, I'm there.
Aaron Muck, two twenty-nine, and four write-ins.
Okay.
Somebody wrote something in, it was a blank.
No, there's something else here. Okay.
I K M Manning School Public Measure, T E. Yes, one twenty-four. No, three twenty-one.
All right. You're not liking it though. Wow, that's it.
And that's, uh, that's it for me.
Yeah. Next.
You're up.
Okay. What precinct are you?
Charter Oak.
Charter Oak. There are, let's start off with Charter Oak.
Mayor.
Is that it? We have a distraction going on.
There you are. I am.
What the heck?
I'm swamped with.
You're working, man.
Still a fall, he's a farmer. We gotta, gotta keep that in mind.
Nope.
Here comes, here comes your, and Idris.
Okay, Charter Oak.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Peggy Staley.
Yep.
Nine-five, thirty-three write-ins.
Ninety-five. Ninety-five write-ins. Ooh, here's a split out, eight.
Oh, how many did Ben get?
Twenty-six, thirty-three.
Ben Hyde, eighteen.
Eighteen, and then the rest is seven?
Should be fifteen.
Earl Nelson, eight. Matt Knowles, five. Wayne Newman, one. Carl Snorn.
Oh, those are all on there.
Ben Hyde, eighteen.
Yep, so they match up. Okay, you good? Yep.
Next one, Charter Oak, City Council at large. James Wilcock, seventy-five.
Yeah.
Russell Mack, ninety.
Okay.
Tracy Hellman, seventy-seven. Nathan Moore, eighty-three. Write-in, six.
All right.
City of Charter Oak, City Council at large. T F V, to fill a vacancy. Alec Castillo, one twenty-two, four write-ins.
All right.
Shocking. I'm at Boyer Valley, Valley School District, Director, one, Director, District One.
I'm getting there. City, you go through the cities first, and then get to the schools. Bear with me. Stay with me.
I'm not going to go home, Chris.
We are. Hey. Know what it should do, is keep the schools piled separately.
Put the school ball over there with me.
All right, Boyer Valley.
School Director, District One.
All right.
Zeros.
All zero.
All zeros. Going on to Boyer Valley, Director District, one. All zeros again.
If they're two, all zeros, yep.
Charter Oak School Director-at-large. Adam Hayden, Adden.
Adams.
One twenty-four, one write-in.
Okay.
Charter Oak Youth School Director, District One, Gregory.
Yeah.
Amundson, Camundson, one oh-six.
Two of them.
Melanie McAndrews, one sixteen, one write-in.
Both of our extra pages.
Extra page. Dennison School Director-at-large, zeros.
Okay.
Slusser School Director-at-large, Wade Gurney, one.
Gotta get to the Slusser's. Slusser, what do you get for District? At-large, okay?
Wade Gurney, one. Rachel Francis Jacobson, one. Danette Hiller, one.
Okay.
Danette Hiller, cram others?
Yep.
All right, next is Western Iowa Tech Community College Director, District Nine.
Okay.
Aaron Muck, one twelve.
All right. My physical therapist.
Thank you.
Northeast precinct.
It was tight. Got into a little pain. Yeah. So you won't walk up and do a mayor?
Northeast.
Where are you gonna start at?
City of Deloitte Mayor, Tyler Brock.
City of Deloitte.
Yep, Mayor.
Of Deloitte, oldest town in the county.
That's right.
Tyler Brock.
Seven.
Yep.
Jerry Mathias, seven. Jerry Lorenzen, one. Yes.
Can I unswitch?
Okay. All right, here we go.
You agree?
Yep.
All right, next we have City of Deloitte, um, Council at Large. Gloria Anderson, eight. Connie Mulligan, eight. Michael Schillerberg, six. Cheryl Kelly, Cheryl Shelley, one. John Kelly, eight. Write-ins, thirty of them. Do you want them all individualized?
Stretch out. Well, I can do that.
At thirty.
Jerry Lorenzen.
How many? Seven.
How about Jerry Mathias?
Jerry Mathias, six.
There's no way I did that.
And then total the rest.
I probably would have some reason.
Total the rest.
Cause I was.
The write-ins.
They actually.
There's thirty altogether. Minus seven is twenty-three. And you want to Jerry Mathias? Minus six.
Wait, cause of COVID.
Come on, get your cold brain working. I'm just a guy.
That's.
It'd be seventeen.
All right, perfect. Had to hear you say it to make it.
Okay, seventeen. City of Vale Mayor, Monte, uh, Crighton Town.
Yes.
Twenty-eight, seven write-ins. Want them individual, uh, Gailing, Dirk, six.
No, just a group, how many altogether?
Seven write-ins.
Got the right time. I just, I got the right effect. Monty, Monty, you got twenty-eight.
How many do Gailing get?
Gailing, Dirk?
Six.
Six. Write-ins of one. I gotta throw a bucket of water on you guys.
Yes.
Separate.
Give me that mallet.
Go.
All right.
Vale City Council at Large, Suzanne M. Bloom, thirty-two.
Okay.
Mark McKinney, uh, McKinney, twenty-eight.
Oh, I need that. You need to move in. Yes, that would be awesome.
City of Vale, uh, at large, Lauren Peterson, thirty-two, two write-ins.
All right.
Um, Westside Mayor, uh, writing, forty-eight.
How many?
Can I add up Kim and Kim do next?
Okay, how many did Michelle?
Twenty-one. Ryan Higgy, three. Charlie.
Total of. Yeah, minus the twenty-one totals.
You know what I mean?
Fifteen.
Go on.
Thirty-two.
Try again.
Derek.
Uh, Ryan Higgy, three. Michelle, twenty-one.
Yeah.
Charlie, five. Larry Jorres, seven. Nicole Simons, one, and Jennifer was one.
Same thing.
What's this?
I just looked over.
Well, no.
Nope.
I gotta hear you say a number again. So Michelle Simons had twenty-one of the write-ins.
Yes.
And add in, add up the rest.
Rest of them will.
Fifty, sixteen, seventeen.
Very perfect.
You're welcome.
We'll get it out of you one way or another.
You will, you will. I'm, I'm working on.
I'm another clean.
A suit of bed. All right, so we have City of Westside at large.
Okay.
Jerry Vaughn, forty. Nicole Cook, forty-one. Larry Johns, thirty-six. Charlie Imes, one. I have two write-ins, Paris, Ross, one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Uh, our Weaver School Director, Denise Rolliger, ninety-three.
Yep.
Drake Oser, eighty-six. Brad Henners, eighty-five. Three write-ins.
Yep. Sounds good to me.
All right. Um, Dennison School Director-at-large, Derek Lambert, twelve.
Hold on, I gotta get to that.
Oops, sorry.
I gotta get through the B C's. I gotta get to the D's. All right, at-large, Dennison School Director?
Uh, Derek Lambert, twelve. Michael Schrum, eight.
Okay.
All right, O A B C I G School Director, zero. No write-ins.
Okay.
And then I've got, uh, District, that was District, District One. District Two, Jeff Rasmussen, zero.
Okay.
All right, um, O A B C I G School Director, District Five, zero. Alright, um, O A B C I G School Director, District Five, zero.
Okay.
District Six, zero.
Alright.
Um, U SAC School Director at Large, zero.
Okay.
Um, Iowa Central Community College Director, District Four, Connie Smith, zero. Keeping up?
Nope. Yeah.
Zero. And then Western Iowa Tech Community College, Aaron Lot, ninety-three.
Troy thinks mine might play in jail. Ninety-three.
My wife signs hers. Awesome. Who wants a book?
We're not done yet. Oh, you got books yet? We got more, we got more precincts to go.
Stack the rest of yours.
We got down some more.
I wanna swap rickets, Herman.
S R K precinct, Schleswig Ricketts County, take them on it.
The man with, yeah, when you get to Ricketts.
We'll probably wanna start, where do you wanna start at? Mayor? Okay, we'll go with that. Then as soon as I get to it, I'll let you know. We'll let you start.
Okay, I'm gonna show you something.
Okay. Kyron Mayor.
Or using. So Mayor is here, but they did the write-in for council here. But the rest of the race for council is where, and even the saving over here. Councils, the writings are here, but the rest of the races is here. We could do a total of writings. And then they wrote them in here. They should be on the other page, but that's not what they did.
Yeah, look at this. Okay.
This has to be blue, right?
It'll be a little.
Who do you parent? Do you want individuals or total write-in? Well, let's see. Mike Liptide, thirteen. Okay, how many else?
Then in total.
Four. Eight. Alright. Okay. Turn up a page. City Council, Kyron, Lodeen Caffner, eleven. Okay.
And then the rest of the race is on the front.
Rest is six, so a total of seventeen write-ins. We're.
Yeah. So six and eleven is seventeen. So there are two names on the ballot. They're right there.
And, and right, on the ballot, City Council, Kyron, uh, Tamara Eck. At fifteen. Okay. Nathan Trembley.
There's nineteen.
Okay, that, that drives. That's what I fear would say. City of Ricketts, Mayor. We're gonna substitute. Oh. Okay, go with the mayor. Mayor, uh, all write-ins. Brad Reson. At four. Okay. Uh, total of the other ones is six. Okay. So total write-ins of ten.
Yep.
For City Council. Once again, all, uh, there was one person on the ballot. Uh, Doreen Brigle had four. Okay. And then we had a total of twenty write-ins.
Yeah.
And Cheryl, uh, Schlesning had three.
Clayton Mark.
Clayton Mark. Clayton.
Or Clayton Mark. I mean, we have.
So there's a Mike Marsh. Clayton Marsh had one. Okay.
And then the total of the rest of the write-ins.
Total of the rest of the, of the write-ins is sixteen.
Here are some extra blue pens.
Alright. Mayor, Schleswig, Schleswig Mayor, election date, S R K precinct. Office. Oh. All write-in candidates. Hey. Beth Wingquist, ninety-four. Alright. Total of the rest, twenty-five. How many does Judy Gierstorf have? Judy had twenty. So that makes.
Five.
Five. Alright. I can, I can live with that. City Council at Large. On the ballot, Troy Thunder had eighty-eight. Okay. Paul Outhouse had seventy-three. Uh, the rest, total write-ins was fifty-one. Wait, how many Judy? Thirty-four of those went to Judy Gierstorf. Perfect. Perfect. Seventeen remaining.
Thank you.
Oh, girl. Youth Director at Large. D O U.
Alma mater.
Yep. Director at Large. Adam Haddon, zero. S R K did not support Adam Haddon. Carter Oak Youth School District Director, District One. Okay. Gregory Amundson, zero. Melanie McAndrews, zero. Alright, very well for them guys.
It happens.
Denison School Director at Large. Okay. On the ballot, Derek Lambert, fifteen. Michael Schrum, fifteen. One right in, alright.
One.
Okay.
Eric one.
Schleswig School Director at Large. She must be like. I got maybe a lot of Schleswig School Director at Large. S R K. Wade Gurney, one eleven. Okay. Rachel Jacobson, one thirty-four. Danette Miller, one twenty-seven. Four write-ins. Alright.
Alright.
The one that killed these ones, I don't know.
Odie Gold Arthur, Battle Creek, I grow. Another one of the alphabet schools. O A B C I G, M B A, L C O U. O A B C I G. O A B C I G Director, one. Lex Jacobson, zero. He's a nice guy. I don't like him. Same school Director District Two. Okay. Jeff Rasmussen, zero. Okay. Uh, this, O A B C I G School Director District Five. Brad Lindell, zero. Yeah, not to be confused with. Same School District, uh, Director, District Six. To fill a vacancy. Dayton Lodger, or Lager, zero. Alright. Okay. Maple Valley, Anthony Odo. I gotta go back now. Somebody throw me there in alphabet. Director District Two.
This is an alphabet.
Oh. District Two, huh? I might have district four. So I gotta get District Two, okay. Laura Streck, zero. That's right, yeah.
Get all that length.
Ready for you. Maple Valley, Anthony Odo, District Four. Yep. Jeremy Schram, zero. He's a super nice guy, too. Western Iowa Tech Community College Director, District Nine. Aaron Buck.
Just letting you.
Jeremy Schram. Yeah. Yeah, the cattle. Oh, guy. Oh, guy, yeah, yeah. Aaron Muck. Yeah, running right in. That's what I'm sure of. That's it.
The rest for the wicked.
Alright. We're dying. And the Denison precinct.
Thank you.
Kyle Denison precinct.
Wanted to give you a break so you could start signing.
Alright. Where we start? Alright, City of Denison Mayor.
Oh, except for absentee. You drew the short straw, sorry.
I keep doing it.
I think I do.
I don't know.
This I do.
Will somebody?
I should get you a binder.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, just holler up. We're there, alright. You ready?
Yeah.
Alright.
I'll be nice next.
I'm Sossman, really like. One hundred and ninety-three. Okay. And there are. Two write-ins. Alright. Um. Charter. Group City of Denison. City Council at Large. Okay, Gregory Miller, one nine one. Okay. And three write-ins. Perfect. Okay, City of Denison. City Council Ward Two. John C. Grandson Senior, thirty-eight. Yep. City of Denison. At Large to fill vacancy, Jennifer Zup Smith, one eighty-one. And.
One of these while you're waiting. There's just two pages.
Six. Six at Large. Okay. Boyer Valley. School District One. Alright. A lot of work just to get a zero and a zero. Well, we gotta be sure. That's right. Right. Okay. Alright, uh, Boyer Valley District Two. Steve, well, Steve Puck, zero. Benjamin Hanson, zero. bunch of. bunch of goose egg. Goose egg. Dude.
It happens.
Okay. Denison School Director at Large. I was supposed to rate. Denison School Director at Large, Denison. Running, I mean, two open seats.
Yeah.
Yep, Derek Lambert, one ninety-eight. Michael Schrum, one eighty-four. Okay. We're getting off. Names down here for write-ins, but no hash marks, Terry. Okay. I got names down, but no hash marks for the write-ins. Is that one each?
Um, does it give you a total amount?
It just gives me two names. I'm showing two write-ins. I mean, that was the two. Somebody just didn't get the half, halfway down.
Yeah, they didn't actually.
Somebody squeal. Just go ahead and take your panel. I am not doing. I am not doing that.
There might be blood to that.
Schleswig School Director at Large.
I will come over there.
Alright.
You're almost there.
At Large, okay. Alright, Wade. Rachel and Danette, zero, zero, zero. Alright. Western Iowa Tech Community College Director, District Nine. Go ahead. Aaron Muck, two zero four. Doug Dorhout must have been a one. Okay.
I don't know why.
And I am, uh, at the end of my page, my.
Are. Thank you. Yeah, Denison voted in one precinct. One, we combined.
Let's do that from now on.
I can't, not for the general or the primary. So he's got absentee.
Alright, I'm ready. You done?
You ready?
Hand me that one.
City of Aryan Mayor, zero.
You all votes.
Yep.
City of Aryan, City Council at Large, zero. The basketball Mayor, zero.
Yep.
City basketball, City Council at Large, zero.
Okay.
City of Buck Grove Mayor, Terry Kong, two.
Yes. So the absentee up here, too.
I know, but this is the precinct.
City of Buck Grove, City Council at Large, Aaron Schrader, two. Aaron Kong, two. Shell Stover, two. And write-ins are three. Well, Chelsea's two, actually, one. Okay.
Yeah, I got three other ones. Derek Sherry, we're gonna load it down some. Derek Sherry, I have one.
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
City of Charter Oak Mayor, Peggy Staley, four.
Okay.
Did Ben have any?
No.
Showing it.
No write-ins, okay.
No absentee, right?
Right, no absentee, right-ins.
Right. City of Charter Oak, City Council at Large, James Wilcox, two. Russell Mack, two. Tracy Hellman, three. Nathan Moore, four.
Alright.
City of Charter Oak, City Council at Large. Alec Castillo, three.
Alright.
City of Deloitte Mayor, Tyler Brash, two. Write-ins. Gary Mathers, eight. Steve Mathers, two. John Kelly, one.
Alright.
We've got a lot of signatures.
City of Deloitte, City Council at Large, Gloria Anderson, two. Connie Mulligan, two. Libby Schreiber, four. Cheryl Kelly, two. John Kelly, seven. Write-ins. Jerry Lorenzen, seven. Gary Mathers, eleven. Matt Gosh, five. Mark Barrier, two. Al Johnson, two. Mike Ricks, two.
Makes the love. Other than the Jerry Lorenzen and Jerry Math.
Mathias, that's the total write-ins. After Jerry Mathias and Jerry Lorenzen.
Um, seven, nine, ten, eleven.
Yep. That's what I came up with, too.
I'll make sure. I know, it's nice.
City of Denison Mayor, Pam Sossman, sixty. Write-ins, one.
Okay.
City of Denison County at Large, Gregory J. Miller, sixty. Write-ins, two.
Alright.
City of Denison City Council Ward Two, John C. Grandson Senior, eleven. Write-ins, one.
Okay.
City of Council, City Council at Large, Jennifer Zup Smith, sixty-two.
Okay.
City of Dow City Mayor, Landon Burhoff, zero. Write-ins, Cody Meyer, four.
Alright.
City of Dow City. Bob Edelman, four. Alec Charles, past, four.
Okay.
City of Tyron Mayor. Write-in, two. Mike Liptide.
Yep.
The Tyron City Council at Large, Tamara Eck, one. Nathan Trembley, one. One right in.
For Lodeen's. Past.
City of Mayor, Manella Corygasko, thirty-seven.
Okay.
City of Manella, at Council, City Council at Large, Sam Ronakis, twenty-nine. Tracy Reister, nine. Kirk Chapman, twenty-eight. Pam Sebring, twenty-three. Lana Georges, twenty-eight. Courtney Webbkey, two.
Okay.
Is that a whole pile, probably?
The City of Ricketts Mayor, one right in, Brad Reson.
Brad Reson, all I'm showing.
Yep.
He's just had mine.
City of Ricketts, City Council at Large.
I've, I've done this many, this.
Green Brigor, zero. Write-ins, three. Carol Sh. Clayton Mark, Ethan Crow.
Okay.
City, uh, Schleswig Mayor. Three write-ins, one for Todd Stater, two for Beth Wingquist.
Okay.
City of Schleswig, City Council at Large, Troy Thunder, two. Paul Outhouse, three. No write-ins.
Okay.
City of Vale Mayor. One right in. Alan Dirks.
Alright.
City of Vale, City Council at Large. Susan M. Blum, one.
Okay.
City of Vale, City Council at Large. Lauren J. Peterson, one. City of Westside Mayor, one right in. Charlie Imes. City of Westside, City Council at Large, Jerry Quant, three. Nicole Coke, one. That's it.
Alright.
Arweva School Director at Large, Denise Raliger. One Greg Oster, four. Brad Henner's, two.
One fourteen, four, two.
Boyer Valley School Director, District One, Kim McCausch, four. Craig Malone, three. One right in.
Oh, Harry, yeah, we're good.
Boyer Valley Director, District Two. Steve Puck, four. Benjamin Hanson, four.
Okay.
Charter Oak Youth School Director at Large, Adam Haddon, four.
Alright.
Charter Oak Youth School Director, District One, Gregory Amundson, four. Melanie McAndrews.
Alright.
Denison School Director at Large, Derek Lambert, seventy-five. Michael Schrum, sixty-six, and one right in, Jill Lally.
There is somewhere.
Alright.
Schleswig School Director at Large, Wade Gurney, three. Rachel Francis Jacobson, three.
Another line. Hold on, I want. I, I gotta get, I gotta get one.
We're heading, you guys sign.
We want, we skip E SAC, counting, we always be, we gotta, we wanna write the Schleswig's.
Schleswig School Director at Large.
Okay.
Wade Gurney, three. Rachel Francis Jacobson, three. Danette Miller.
Okay.
Well, now, O A B C I G School Director, District One.
Oh, I find it here.
Keeps him on his toes.
I think she did that, yeah.
Oh, I know she did. That's, that's total. Alright.
Zeros.
A lot of work.
O A B C I G School Director, District Two, zeros.
At least we're gonna do.
O A B C I G School Director, District Five, zero.
Okay.
O A B C I G District Six, zero.
Alright.
Okay, Ica Manning School Director at Large. Mike Bloom, eleven. Zachary Minor, forty-four. Stephanie Wells.
Yep.
Ica Manning School District, one A. Bridget Glore, twenty-two. T J Stirk, twenty-seven.
Bridget, twenty-seven.
Yep. Manning, Ica Manning School District Two A. David Heller, forty. Emily Rasmussen, twenty-five.
Okay.[1597.98]
I can Manning School Director at Large, Jeremy Fox, thirty-five, write-ins, Becky Carson, two, Rich Wig, one, Bill Strachey, one. Four. East Sac School Director at Large, zeros.
Okay.
Maple Valley Anthonoto School Director District Two, zeros. Maple Valley Anthonoto School Director District Four, zeros. Des Moines Area Community College District Three, Jim Gossip, thirteen.
Thirteen. For Jim.
Iowa Central Community College District Four, zeros. Iowa Western Community College District Eight, zeros. Western Iowa Tech Community College District Nine, Aaron Muck, nineteen, fourteen, one write-in. I can Manning School Public Measure, yes, nineteen, no, fifty-six. Oh, you gotta jump back, huh?
He does.
Yes, nineteen, no, fifty-six.
Alright, we're driving.
Yeah, I'm done.
Yes, you are, but you're not done signing. And he hasn't even begun to sign, so.
I haven't even begun.
Thank you, thank you all very, 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 very much. Um, so there is a recount been requested of the City of Arians Mayor position. No, I know, awesome.
That's gonna take forever.
No, well, yeah, probably, it'll take longer to put it all together than it will to actually do the recount.
Oh, yeah.
Seven ballots.
What's the?
No, nine ballots, sorry.
Contestant, nine ballot?
Yeah.
What was it?
Four to three.
Four to three with two undervotes. Don't ever say that.
Think anybody polls these up on the wall? Third certificate, all alike.
Long story, short, well, anyway, um, I'm gonna have something on the agenda next week. Um, so, the board needs to... Even though it was filed with me, the board needs to... There's a resolution to do anyway, but we'll get it all organized and ready to go and hopefully, um, next Tuesday after your meeting. Maybe in the early afternoon or something, depending on everybody's schedules, we'll get it accomplished.
Recount?
Sweet, yeah. All nine ballots.
We have to put Arian to do it.
No, they're coming here.
Where can I, can I start? I don't wanna screw stuff up, so, are you trying to get through that pile first, or?
She's probably the last one after me, I mean, I'm the last. I'll, I'll just put my. And if you wanna go on with the agenda and finish signing those after the meeting.
I was waiting for.
You should, whatever you need to do.
Okay.
Mine looks exactly the same from my first to my last, but today, I'm having a hard time.
Well, done, I'll do that.
So, continue with the agenda. For everybody to pay attention a little bit. Alright, next up is a discuss and take action on the new hire, is Amy available?
We need Amy Piper.
Amy Piper?
Do a second to your canvas. It'll be much. Thank you. I knew it had to be there somewhere.
Remember, this is what we voted no against, and then we're gonna get us some clarifications on the.
I think you were emailed that information.
Yes, we were. Okay. New hire policy, wanna go over for the public some interest of what you found out?
Yes, so, um, Jack Reason said that, um, if we call it vacation. That it will be the new payout if they leave, so he suggested doing, uh, five personal days. For a new hire, um, and then, when they hit, when they hit their first anniversary, if you don't want them to carry over. Um, if they don't use it, um, then it would, it would not carry over, you wouldn't have to pay it out if they leave. It would just be five personal days.
Like it, you know, uh, somebody did send me a, an email or a text saying that if it's not gonna carry over that, which you guaranteed, they're gonna take it, so.
Well. Yeah, I don't know. I, I would think some people may be planning ahead and want to save them. But if you're not carrying them over, then there's no chance of that, so. That's just what I think, some people are going to.
Keep them in case they need them.
Yes.
Cause that's the idea behind it.
Yeah, right, but if, if there's no carryover or no chance of that, no, then they definitely use them.
That last week.
You're gonna force them to use it.
Sherry said she'd like to see him allowed to carry over.
I know, me too.
Yeah.
But.
So then they start to, for, after you get there first year, you have two weeks in?
Yeah, that, the end of that first year, then. If you held on to those, you start our normal schedule of vacation, which is a week. After the first year, you get a week, and then they'd have those first five days to carry into that week, so then they'd have a total of two weeks. After the first year, so I'm just, I mean, some people do plan ahead. And know that they have a family event coming, or have scheduled a vacation, or, you know, made reservations for something or whatever, but. So, then you, I feel like it's a punishment if you don't let them carry them over.
And just, and I'm just thinking this out loud.
Yeah.
So, year three, let's say they use all five days up in year two.
Yep.
They're just back, those days are gone, they're not.
Right.
Over again.
Right. I mean, our, our same carryover policy exists, the ten days.
Right.
So, even after that second year of employment, when they could carry both those years of time into the third year. I mean, they could, they could carry that over, again, if that's part of planning, part of, but then they have to start using them because we only allow for ten days of vacation carryover.
It's not like they're getting paid for them, or holding them as retirement, because there's.
Right.
Personal time.
Unless they plan on quitting after three years of employment with us, and then, you know, it is, but. Not really a retirement if you only work here three years.
Right.
Just a whole, just a nice payout.
Boy, the idea that stem, and this was that we're having a hard time hiring people, because they don't have a week off to start.
Right, and I had absolutely no one, you know, in the general public have any problem, they thought that it seemed fair, and that it wouldn't really be hard.
I think the carryover, I like the carryover.
That's not a deal.
Give them the options and take their kids to checkups or doctor, or whatever, without being penalized.
And if you don't need those days, and you wanna carry them into your second year, it means you didn't just, you know, start working here just to get a pay day off, so. Either they take those, uh, first five days that first year, even though they really didn't need them, or they, you know. Carry them forward in case the next year they have something happen, so.
Then if someone leaves after being here for, you know, for weeks, then you do have to pay them out if it's called vacation.
When it's called personal days, then that they walk out six months.
So, in that second year, do they carry over them, they're called personal days there too, so they can use them however they want to, and they have another basket that they traded rather than a vacation?
Well, that was gonna be my question, is would we just at that time? Roll them as big as, not call them first.
I didn't know if I did to create them in a basket, that kind of, you know, and then that becomes unfair to the people that are working here, cause they have to.
Yeah, we're not feeding silage that much anymore, other silage. Is that hard, Amy, to extract personal days, and then after the year, one year, roll them into vacation days? Okay.
The second year, because somebody has.
The thing I had brought up to me is, do you wanna put a probationary period, they have to work at least thirty days before they pull out of that?
One of the.
I'm, I'm not, I can go either way, I'm just throwing it out for discussion.
Deal that, um, Kim had set forward, and I didn't bring it with me, was you, you've got a day after ninety days, and then you would have two days every thirty days after that. I think something like that, but ninety-day probation before you got your first shave, I could delay that, uh.
Well, we even have a delay on sick time, what is that?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, and then you can start using sick time, I mean, so we could.
Is it two weeks or is it two pay years? It's two months. Which, I mean, you're having to give you that check and not to.
Right, exactly, we haven't paid you yet, so.
I can, I can go either.
I like it simple, personal days. I don't mind rolling over into the second year.
I don't either, so, feel like we have a motion from the city.
Yes. And what? Allow rollover?
So, we're calling them personal days?
Personal days, so that it's not a buyout, I like that, five first, first days of week, we're gonna do last week.
I'm making you the man, I'm taking the motion here, so you're setting the target.
I made the motion last weekend, we just needed the technicals to make sure that it was done right.
On rollover.
They can just use it from day one. Use it from day one, otherwise, I get this another thing to monitor.
Five days, five days?
Five days, what we talked about, we did last week, so we're done.
Five, personal days, no payout, allow rollover, is there anything else? After the first year, it's gonna become vacation, goes into the vacation bank? After first year.
Amy, to make it work outright.
Goes into the vacation bank, those, is that how I wanna word it, Amy?
Yes, I hope this really helps our departments with new hires, it's something that is enticing. Oh, oh, yeah, I know what you were gonna say.
Yeah, you're less of employment, we're gonna do it for everybody?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
You're less.
Within the last year?
Yes.
Well, within the last, several higher, within the last twelve months.
Within the last twelve months.
I know, I think this, eleven months, three weeks. Second?
Once you get it done scribbling, once you get done scribbling, could you read that motion back to us?
Motion was by.
Dave.
Bauer.
And seconded by Dozer.
Second.
Please read it back to us, though, there's a little bit of, can that?
This doesn't cause any budget issues for any of the department head's practice.
They're not paying anything out, so.
Pay anymore.
Yeah, right, right, I mean, it becomes a payout after that, but. Anyway, so, the new hire policy, five. Five personal days, no payout, we're allowing rollover, after the first year, it goes into your vacation bank. And those hired within the last twelve months are included. Effective today? Effective immediately?
Yes.
The no waiting period or probationary period have to be listed in that?
Not in this motion, so.
Is what it is, that's line in the sand for us where we're at.
Okay.
Good, awesome.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I will just say that I talked to a new hire that is, he had planned time to be gone. And so, his only option before this policy came into place was to take that time off without paying.
Yeah.
And so, he was extremely happy, I guess, that, hey, I'm glad you got to do something.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think it's a bad thing.
No, it's a good gesture.
I think it's a lot of help for you to do it.
Especially coming from another job, and, you know, you.
I'm gonna call the question. All in favor states it isn't a resolution? All in favor states so by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Was no, chat, motion carries. Good luck hiring.
Awesome.
That helps.
There we go.
Okay, next on the agenda, vacation holiday schedule, this was the deal where the governor's made a. A, uh. Thursday, or during Thanksgiving, and one more during Christmas holiday time, an extra state holiday. And do we wanna carry that on to the county level?
I don't know.
Um, Sherry was here for.
Amy Phil.
Amy, you gonna fill in for Sherry on that then?
Yeah, I guess. I think our biggest thing is, when we have a, when we have a driver's license person that comes in, and they've had an ignition interlock device. We as a county can't just automatically approve that, so if they're not working because of the holiday. Or they take their time off because they are leaving early on Wednesday, it allows, if they come in, they make that appointment, and they expect us to get that done. But we can't clear that, this, only the state can clear those, so then we don't have anybody to contact. So then, we've got somebody screaming at us, but we can't fix. They've taken either time off, or they're starting out, obviously, they're starting their holiday out really bad, because they were expecting to drive someplace. And there are just so many functions that we as a county, at the county level, don't have a driver's license, that we have to start the process. Send it to the state, the state continues the process, approves it back to us, and then we issue. It's really hard for us to face so many people not having that assistance at the state level. And this year, they are, they're just so different than they are this year, having that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, having, uh, the twenty-sixth off after Christmas. Because they give them Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, so they give them two days always of personal. So, it just, it makes it really uncomfortable for us, it makes it hard on our customers. As to banks and realtors coming in on the tax side and the motor vehicle side. Banks operate on skeleton crew like we do, um, those days, um, realtors, they, we touched base with all of them. They said they try not to do closings at that time, because those are family times, they said those summer holidays are different. But the, the winter holidays, the Christmas, the Thanksgiving, the Christmas, the New Years, they really treat those as family holidays, and they try not to do closings anymore. Those days before, and those days immediately after, because, because there are enough banks that aren't open. Or are operating on skeleton crews, which is not, just not enough people to reach out to, to finalize stuff during those times. So. We just.
So, from the, from the driver's side, I guess, perspective, is that when Joe Public comes in to do something, if the state is closed. It's not like the county can do its part and then give it to the state, so the next time, when the state does open, then it gets processed and it gets completed?
Cause we have to collect, we have to have it every, we have to have everything processed, approved, and money collected before that license prints. Money has to be in the system before it prints, so you walk in to do a standard renewal, because we all have good driving records and good driver's licenses. We walk in, we can do the renewal. Somebody that is within thirty days of their, um, expiration date on their, uh, temporary citizenship document. We have to get special approval from the state, it gets passed on to the state, the state does their investigation, passes it back to us, we finalize.
Does that process usually take, or is it just a normal?
On just a normal renewal?
Well, no, on, on the case that you were citing as far as.
Like the temporary resident.
Does that get done in one day anyway?
Sometimes, if the right people are available, like then at ICE, and, I mean, at those next levels. Where those ignition interlock devices, you, those cost, you pay it a monthly fee to have that in. If you remove it from your vehicle, when the state tells you you can, and then you're, you can't get your driver's license. You can't get that I I D listing removed from your driver's license, and you get stopped driving. They look at that driver's license when you get stopped, and they say you need your, your blower in there, where's your blower? You just got ticketed, because you followed what the letter from the state said you could do, you could have it removed, come in, get your new license. But we can't actually do that without those, the state finalizing it. It just, it makes situations really complicated, it stresses us out, it stresses the customers out. Not having any support at the state, and they don't even keep a skeleton crew, when they're closed at DOT, they're closed. And we can't ask for assistance on anything.
Once again, we have the state creating agreements.
Exactly.
But if you say to that person that makes their appointment, you know, the state is closed, and sorry, we can't. Your fault, you know, that you can just.
Right, and we, I mean. You know, we try, we, we do the appointments, we try and know what they're coming in for, but then we also have the walk-ins, that we try and accommodate every one of our walk-ins. There are very few that we don't accommodate, but, and there, and because I owe you driver's license, I know there are other things. That we don't have access to, it just, I don't know, it just makes it hard. On the motor vehicle side, we do have enough that we can't get answers from, um, most, most things. If they've ever been a junk certificate, or a salvage vehicle, or have insurance hits in other states, all that. They give us, they say twenty-four to forty-eight hours for a response, so we tell our customers right off, oh, this was a salvage vehicle one time. The state has to approve letting us give you plates for it, it'll take us twenty-four to forty-eight hours to hear back, we're used to that denial. But we're also not putting people on the roads with a bad license, because we couldn't get that state assistance to finalize something.
On the flip side of that, my college kid comes home for the holidays, can't get into your office.
Yeah.
Just need to renew their license. They're home, they're closed, they're back there, they're going to.
There's two.
I mean, there's, we can sit here and argue back and forth, and you've all brought all great points up, but. Some of that is, you said it, when they call, make an appointment, you, we, we won't be able to facilitate that, that day.
Not our fault.
Right.
Not our fault, or, you know, I've seen it before, you guys have gone to trainings and stuff, so treasurer's office is closed at one o'clock today. Frustrating for people.
Right.
I, I'm scared we're gonna, by taking the day off, trying to avoid some of that, we're gonna actual. Lose some of those people that do need to get in at the C U, and, and have legitimate, and can be, can be, can be handled within the office.
On the other side, though, you're still gonna operate on that skeleton crew, because they have one of their vacation time and their family time. And those walk-ins aren't probably gonna be accommodated the way they'd like to be either, so.
I think it's obviously the walk-in, it's probably a lot for a normal day for someone here.
To close the whole place down is, I just, I just don't see that as the answer.
Mr. Mulder, he's been trying to word it.
No, and I, I get. Where you're at, it's very frustrating, trying to coincide with what the state's doing, they're shutting down, they talked to some businesses around Carver County that. Fairly large one, said, yeah, we're gonna get the twenty sixth off just because of what we talked about with the new hires and. You know, being that family time is very important to employees and we're just gonna be. Something I think.
Reasons why it's important for that.
Right. For that, I guess we got a number of other department heads in here, I, we need to shut or to declare that the twenty sixth is gonna be a holiday for the county because of treasurer's office. I wanna know how it's gonna affect Sarah, you or Public Health that went or Louise or here, and if you see nobody coming in.
Yeah.
Why?
Around Christmases.
Cr- you know.
You know, Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving's different, yeah.
Christmas time.
We do a lot of business that they.
Twenty sixth lands during the week?
Christmases.
I see Christmas as a little bit.
Most people think we're supposed Christmas Eve anyways, and I.
Let me not lump them together, you know, why, why do we have to lump Thanksgiving?
Well, I said, if we did anything, I could see a more legitimate reason to give off the twenty sixth this year. Being on where it lands, and I think that a number of businesses are also struggling with new hires are giving it off just. To accommodate their employees and their family and giving them family time.
But why, why would we do that this year when we set the holidays in January, I, I think we're really going out of the boat here. I, I think we should talk about it for January, we've already set the vacation days. You know.
Well, maybe it should have been discussed last year in a little more in depth and we have the authority to, to grant that if we want to.
Hopefully do we not?
Well, how do we not? Right, you still do, we still, we want to change it, it's not like it's carved in stone and you can't, I mean.
I was always told that.
Yeah, I mean, you can.
Thing is, and I'm not. All God just brought up was, we started talking about a new holiday policy, so then it came with more vacation days. I don't know.
I said.
I don't know, I talked to businesses too, they said, well, one said. They get how many off already, the next one said, I, I could get behind that, you know, and the next one said. No problem as long as next year they're open, them days they're closed and, and I. So it's, it's six, one half a dozen the other.
I say we're discussing. For the, like in my office, we work with attorneys, banks, um railatures, it, it's whatever you guys decide, it's just a matter of communication. Letting them know, in our homes, just letting them know, hey, we're gonna be closed this day, that's all that they care about is that we let them know. Right, at least with the folks that I work with in my office.
I, I'm just gonna. Just for, to do my Cecil moment here and look, be the devil's advocate. The only other thing that to, to think about here is, is how we're affecting our taxpayer by giving another holiday. Okay, I mean, great points all, I mean, there's no point in having people sitting in here twiddling on their thumbs either, but. For those that like Kyle brought up that are coming back from college or something quick and need to be able to get in here and get something done. Passport for say they're going on a overseas thing for school or you never know, I mean, who knows? But uh, I just think, you know, we've got a pretty good slate of holidays. Uh we just gave five additional days for new hires, um we're, we're. I will tell you what made me think about this during this week, I was just scrolling through some videos and Rand Paul made a comment. Davy Crockett was in the uh. Was in, in the House of Representatives at one time and he went back for reelection after his second term or something. And uh was talking to one of his constituents and the guy said, Mr. Crockett, I think you did a great job, but you did one thing, you absolutely crushed me. He said, and I don't, I'm not, I'm paraphrasing, okay? But uh, he said, so you have, you don't have my vote this time, sir, Georgetown had had a fire. They dedicated twenty thousand dollars to women and children's thing, sounds great. But he said, would you have done the same thing for a community in Tennessee? And he said, these aren't your dollars, sir. These are the dollars of the American taxpayer. And, and in the same sense, I think we always gotta remember that when we're giving more benefits. And if it's, if it's, yeah, I, I, the five days, obviously I voted for it, so I think that was a good benefit, I mean. Getting good people is always imperative because you, you'll have better, you know, your, the retention, all these things, so you want good people in, obviously. So I mean, but I just wanna think, throw these, that thing out, I mean, the state doing this seems more like a burden to us. Than a, than, I, so we're, we're going along with their burden, so while I get frustrated with the things the state does to us. I gotta assume you guys do as well, so what do our taxpayers feel like, are they feeling burdened by the fact that we're? And then how do they feel, I, I just wanted to throw that out, just one more thing to think about why we're doing.
I, I um. I don't know about being off the day before Thanksgiving, I, I'm not so concerned about that one. But Christmas Eve, we only work four hours. It's really hard to come in here for four hours when you're excited about Christmas, when you're excited, you, you know, you gotta travel, you know, you gotta do these things. And, and no one even knows we're open for the, those four hours, so if you would be so generous. To maybe think about a holiday, it's only four hours.
For Christmas.
And at, and ask of only four hours. And I don't know, I think that would be a good gesture to employees to say, hey, we're giving you. The whole day now, so it's not like, you know, nothing has changed, you are giving something, but it's only four hours, so. But it would make a huge difference.
Christmas Eve this year lands on Sunday. Right, so we don't get any more. So it may be discussion today for the.
Yeah.
Would be the day after. Twenty sixth.
I will say one other thing, Arden, you're done? One other, for now, one other thing that I actually had a discussion with somebody about was. You know, we don't necess, we, we always do the, the holidays in January when we do our vote. And, and since the Christmas thing is just, I, I would like to stay with that so that nobody feels that we slighted somebody prior or. You know, it's within, within the regular structure, you know, we aren't changing things midstream. You know, I think we gotta be careful of doing that too often, you know, I mean, we change midstream with the five day thing, but we've seen the. I mean, obviously we watched you lose somebody over that, we've seen, we've heard other ones, if you talk about hires that you lost because of that, so I mean. That seemed a little bit more mission essential and getting after it right away, so I mean, I understood that one. So this one here, I don't know if it couldn't wait to the January anyway, that would be my only comment that. I've made sense to you.
I mean, that, that's fine, I, I agree with Amy, it would be really. It would be, it would be a lot, especially um in our department where we have to do a deposit. We come in and we either have to close our door at eleven thirty so that we can do our deposits until noon. So that we can walk out when everybody else does, or we close our door at noon and walk out at twelve thirty. Half an hour later than everybody else.
Makes sense.
To be closed for a day and a night.
I get it.
And we don't even get that money to the banks because by then most of those banks are closed on, on Christmas Eve also because if they're open, they do only that half hour. Now, one of the things um I checked on before I came in here um. Was how much we had done the last Christmas Eve, we worked, we did twelve thousand dollars for the day on the motor vehicle side, we did zero on the tax side. And forty dollars of our um twelve thousand dollars was postage. And we sent out plates at three bucks a plate for a dollar a renewal. So we did mail, that's how I read that, is we did a lot of mail that day that was just sitting in the basket, we weren't waiting on people that were coming in.
Sure.
We were playing catch-up on mail that we could have spread out over two or three days after we got back. And that's, yeah, so.
Good, Mr. Mulder?
Cause this is discussion and take action, I do feel like. The twenty sixth this year should have been discussed more last January when we did set. I think family time is very important, I value all the hard work the employees put in for the county all year long. And they fail for lack of second, I will make a motion to approve. The twenty sixth this year, you get, given to the employees as a holiday day off.
Twenty sixth of.
December.
December.
Does that affect the, our unions about some like a, and the days that, that they have?
Let's see if the seconds are not being discussed.
Hold on a second. I gotta get to my calendar.
It's on Tuesday.
It'll be a Tuesday. I'll second. Throw a poll on the table.
That was my.
Get on Tuesday.
To add with that, I just think that there's very minimal, minimal business being done at the county, if any. For our employees to have to come in. When they should be with their family.
It'll be interesting, I guess, because this year is just a rarity having Christmas fall in it. You know, when it does and not being able to provide, I guess. Christmas Eve as a half a holiday or a full holiday because it falls on the weekend. Um so it's a worry, it makes you wonder if people would be wondering. Uh that the twenty sixth, I'll be able to get stuff done at the courthouse. Because it'll be open. You know, that's one of the, maybe I got that off. From work or I'm back for visiting family, but I can run up there on the twenty sixth because it should be open because it's not Christmas Day. Makes you wonder.
And if this passes or fails today, we can address next year in January.
And I would. So we don't, I don't think we'll forget one anyway.
I was just thinking, what if you added, and I just said to Amy, what if you had the option of, you stayed open those days, but you had the option of taking off. Either the Friday, the twenty second or the twenty sixth, then the courthouse would be open. But per office, you would have half your staff working one day, half your staff working the other day.
I like that, I mean, that's, that's a good point.
Nice, nice, sir.
I mean, I guess floating holidays, I think that's something we could do more of.
Yeah.
Just as, because we are serving the public and the public is paying all of our bills, paying all of our salaries. That to me, we should be open more, not less, because we're serving the public. Uh that's a good way to do that, is to make, make a couple of them floating holidays.
Compromise for everybody.
Exactly.
Nice compromise. Mel, did you have something?
And I'm not, yes, what Bonnie had to say, but I will say, what happens is. Twenty second, half the staff gets off, cost them their floating holiday or whatever.
Or comp day.
Or comp day, however. The next day, the twenty fourth or sixth or whatever, a big blizzard. So the whole courthouse, it will never close, it will never close, but you can call in sick or whatever. So then they're gonna be arguing, well, I should get the twenty seventh off because it was snowing on the twenty sixth. I don't know, I like a, I like a floating holiday deal way better than, and let the management. The elected officials manage their departments accordingly, because I'm in the camp where. We're here to serve the public, we're a tax, we are here for the taxpayers of the county.
That's what I heard throughout this whole process of uh another day off and the courthouse.
Those five day offs, every other, most other businesses are closed down, I'm not saying I floated, I'm saying the twenty sixth, that was my motion. Yep. Most other private industries are closed the twenty sixth. We have very little, we're not serving.
Our banks closed on the twenty sixth.
We got to the banks and I said a bear skeleton, no, anyone?
That they're private industry and then the other thing is, is people that work at those, this would give them an opportunity to actually be here.
They're probably getting a Christmas bonus too, though.
No, I don't think so, I don't think so.
There's other holidays the bank. There's other holidays the banks take off that the county works also, so. I'm just saying, if, if we're doing very minimal business or if any for the public. So we're, we're, we got the lights on for nothing? But. But we're.
We're here just in case.
Either we're busy or we're not, they're doing paperwork.
We're thinking of this building in general, we got a whole crew of secondary roads, they're working, they're laying roads, they're doing whatever, we got public health that are seeing clients, patients.
You got.
Doing that. Thinking outside of this building, because the arguments was there's very little happening in this building.
Yeah, I think we're.
This floor maybe.
The, so I, I don't know, I don't know, sheriffs are working.
Yeah, there's more to it than just.
The second floor.
You can't give somebody that has a low uh in their car.
And we do have comp days, there's some people who have trouble using all them.
Yep, vacation.
And I'm not saying, I, I just don't, I just.
Do you like to call a question?
I'd like to call a question.
Yeah, you know, we're at.
Okay, I'd like to call a question then, uh all in favor states so by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose no?
No, no.
No. Motion fails.
Too many moving parts to it all, it just can't make a blanket, uh everybody.
We can discuss it again.
We can discuss it again.
I just, I just ask, is this just because it's the twenty sixth or is it more a better conversation next year, maybe it's actually.
I think, I think this needs to be a discussion when we do.
Motion was just for twenty sixth.
The motion was the this, the twenty sixth this year, I think we de, we deal with the holidays on the holidays when we, when we do them at the beginning in January.
We'll look at them to see where.
And, 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 and this was a good point, the, the Christmas Eve thing. And I think maybe you even stated in, in our holiday schedule, if it doesn't fall on a weekend.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, currently our policy states that, uh please note that when Christmas Eve falls on a Monday through Thursday. Christmas Eve afternoon will be observed as a holiday.
Correct.
So Christmas Eve this year is not. It wasn't always that.
I remember, I wanna say seven, seven years ago, the last time this happened, when um it was, Christmas Eve was on a Monday, the supervisors did give us the whole day.
Yeah.
And it was just that year, I believe, but.
Sometime in my past twenty years, it changed and they get a half a day off.
That was Jerry's last year, yeah, that was.
Secondary road, always working eight hours.
And people think they'll take vacation.
That's a good point, but you brought that up.
You know.
I talked about that before tonight.
Well, that's a management.
Not perfect, I'm not gonna say it's an ideal.
Um can I just, if we look at the holidays, can we also look at the federal holidays, because that's what affects me with the VA, obviously. The state does because I live in Department of Veterans Affairs, I'm really close, I can't get TD different teams, things like that, but my biggest ones. Are, they've added in so many new federal holidays, like Juneteenth, that went through a curveball into my world this year because everything shut down, the banks. The federal system was all shut down, I didn't realize that was a federal holiday because that's that one passed me by, so I put that. Next year, I'll probably just take a vacation, because you know, I'm the one person out this, I'll take a vacation day, because I cannot. Do a whole lot, my direct servants are gonna sit in the VA computer, they're not gonna be forwarded on or anything like that, so. There's a lot of new obscure or newer holidays to do that.
Makes sense, that's, that makes sense, I, I will tell you this though. This was something I was thinking about when we were talking about the state holidays, the state, while they have things that affect where we're out here. They don't work where the wheel meets the road, we do, we're out here with the folks, I mean, they count on us. Most every day they're count, somebody's counting on us and, and I get some days they're like, but. I don't ever want to dismiss the people, you know, if, if, you know, if we got one person that's desperate, I just, like Kyle brought up about a kid coming home from college. Why not, and that's just your department, obviously, there's other departments that could be, I, I think we always gotta remember them people too. When we're ma, when we're thinking about these things.
Yes, man. Um when the board um starts considering um looking at the handbook, because I know that's coming up soon. Um if we could possibly look at that vacation schedule that's currently in the handbook, um maybe, I know, what is it, third week of vacation, they earn at like eight. Eighth year and then. I can't even remember.
Four at fifteen.
Eight fifteen to twenty.
Yeah, eight fifteen and twenty, maybe looking at bumping those up, I know that would affect some of our current employees, maybe not our long-term. Because some of our long-term are already earning the full five weeks of vacation. But just to, you know what I mean, especially that, so they go from one week at a year, well, they get the, they get a week of personal days at the beginning of hire now. They get a week at one year at the end of the year, then they get another week at two years and then they wait till, what'd we say? Eight, eight years, I'm just saying. The board to give that consideration, maybe to move that eight weeks up to say six. And then the other two maybe up another two years to just something to think about.
We can open a margin where we go to.
Yeah.
And I think that has been addressed, was through negotiations, I remember with secondary roads that they did readjust that for the negotiation at the time, but.
Right, they don't negotiate that, that's not part of their.
I don't know how that all got blended into the handbook when that did.
Right.
And I see, I know that it says uh continuous years of service, so if somebody was here ten years and then they left.
And then left and came back, they start over.
They start over.
They start over.
And it may be nice to. I guess offer them a chance to jump back in where they were.
Oh, no, don't, don't.
No, no, you left, you left.
People will come.
I mean, they're gonna get five days when they get hired, so.
You know, they're ready to come back, it was just right, because I guarantee I'm.
So just, I just wanted to bring that up because I knew it was on the agenda as vacation and holiday, so.
Excellent.
And that would be a handbook thing, probably.
Craig, we already have issues with people going part-time, full-time and trying to figure out their.
Looking at the policy manual, is that three years, what, every three years we look at it?
Look at it just off.
Well, why don't we?
We're planning on it.
Try to keep one conversation going here, folks.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right. Who's got something to say, Amy?
So I know on the agenda, I was talking about vacation and holidays, that second item. Um so on vacation, um and I don't know if you wanna do this before the handbook, but if you could remove.
And I don't know if you want to do this before the handbook, but if you could remove, if you think about removing that twelve hundred hour. We do have a few people retiring. In the next couple of weeks. And, um, they are long-term employees and, you know, I just feel like since it's. We've already had one employee, and even though they have their own board and all of that. Still have one employee that did not have to work the twelve hundred hours to get that prorated vacation. It would be, if you guys are considering making changes, it would be.
You would just need a prorated schedule, right?
Right.
Instead of her plowing the twelve hundred hours.
Just when someone leaves, if it's, they're leaving because they're retiring or just leaving in general. Give them that full, that prorated vacations from their last anniversary and pay them out. No math, they don't have to have that minimum twelve hundred hours.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, certainly look at that when we do the major.
Well, I'm asking if that's something that you can do now, because we have employees leaving. That have been here for a very long time, and I just don't want it to be an issue.
You're the ones that are leaving, are they currently gonna have trouble hitting that twelve hundred hour figure or?
One, I think possibly he passed it. Because he thought he had to. And the other one wants to leave, but now he's thinking, well, do I have to work or can I leave now? Because I want to leave right now, but.
I'm not prepared to make that decision today. It's, um, you know, that, that's one of those that you kind of. That's all that was on here for that reason. And we got one that's worked it, one that almost did. Where there's got to be that line in the sandy that we have the policy or we don't, and it's, you know, for the one that worked the twelve hundred hours. Then they're good, but you got one that didn't, and then we open up that. I just think it's something that needs to actually be in the policy and to just change it like that. I, I just feel we need to just stick with the policy we have. My thought on that.
That's kind of where we run under the pickle, with the last thing we're under, different boards.
And it's a whole different can of worms, and if I just, I just am not willing to go down that path today.
People might want to retire, they should talk to figure it out. Don't have to meet it.
There are a lot of. Republicans, elected officials that are upset that that. Person got to get that payout without having.
That's on that board.
I understand that, but you also have, it's.
It's a tough one.
It's a thing.
Yep.
And. These people have worked here for a very long time.
It's got to be in the policy or not. We can't just take a magic wand and change it at a whim in a meeting.
Well, it is on the agenda, though.
You know, it, vacation holiday schedule that I did not know it was gonna be about changing the policy about getting accrued vacation. Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I, don't worry, I asked you, because.
Yeah, different.
The nature of that beast was.
That was completely different.
It's different, but it's the same. Still have a retired employee leaving.
We'll cross that bridge when it comes to it, I'm not, we're not changing policy today.
I knew this was coming, how about that? I mean, to tell you, that's why I, that's why I thought it was imperative that we follow the handbook, you know.
And it's not there for these two employees.
They should talk to the conference board.
Can't talk to conference board. They can be angry with the conference board, but the, uh. Well, I would tell you that I, I sure wouldn't be ready to do any. I, I still haven't digested it from the conference board, I was.
Well, and it's, the thing is, is it's vacation that they have, you know. I guess it goes back to, we don't know why there was that twelve hundred hour minimums. And does it? You know, if you want to say they earned it.
I don't know what's in there. All I know is that it was in there and, and, you know, we, we. Some of us were going on fighting about the handbook and its validity and how important it was. And now, not only do we have a conference board that chose to not, to not acknowledge their handbook. Now we're wanting to dismiss our county handbook as well? Me, that takes more than quick.
I just think that because no one knows why that twelve hundred hour is in there. You know.
I interrupted you.
No, because I guess when, when you read the policy, to me, you accrued. Or you get that vacation upon your anniversary date, right? On your last. When your last year comes and you hit that anniversary date, bang, you get that, um, vacation time. So it's earned when you hit that, not earned when you get the twelve hundred hours. It's earned on your anniversary date, right?
Well, not the way the policy reads now.
On your term, your last year of working here, had you worked that twelve hundred hours, you get it. Why twelve hundred hours? I don't know.
So is that?
Saying if you. Do away with that twelve hundred hours and whatever you worked, get a prorated amount of vacation. And do away with the twelve hundred hours because we don't know why it's twelve hundred hours. No one here knows why.
I guess we vote on the board. This board votes on what's in the handbook. But we, I would want something for you and Jack on how that should be wrote and why. I mean, it makes sense what you're saying, the true time, but. To me, you know, and it's what I said down at the conference board, sorry to bring that up, mind you, but. You, you know, the handbook's there, I would rather go to court because we were doing the right thing. Than because we ignored our own policy. You get my drift? And that's, and that's where I am on that. You know, I mean, that, that's where, that's why I said I'm still having trouble adjusting what happened down there, but go ahead.
Um, so what, what you're kind of trying to put in place then is. If you've been here thirty years and your anniversary day is, um, tomorrow. You could retire and get five weeks of vacation paid out on the day of your anniversary.
Well, you get that anyways. What I'm saying is if you worked three more months.
Okay.
Just get your prorated amount. It's not going to be five weeks, it's gonna be a prorated amount of hours that you have worked. So you're not getting five weeks, you're.
So it won't be like for a full year if you didn't work a full.
You get three months worth.
Right.
It makes sense.
And that's what I'm saying right now. Right, and right now, that stipulation of you don't get anything unless you've worked twelve hundred hours. All I'm saying is remove the twelve hundred hours. So there's not a minimum hours worked, whatever you worked, just. You know, you get a prorated amount.
That sounds like it needs to go on that list of things you're gonna put together that we need to discuss updating our handbook.
Well, yeah, I, I'm just, the reason why I was saying it now is because you guys were talking about holidays, vacation. I know these people that are leaving and we, you know, we've only had one other person. Leave, retire, they got it. These people, you know, I'm just asking because it's what I did.
Thank you.
I tried to make it fair and.
Consistency.
Inconsistent. I said, you set the bar when you paid her out. And now you're gonna go turn around and not give someone.
This board did not do that.
You are a third of that board, so you did. So a third of your, that board didn't say yes. But I'm just saying, and I just, I'm all for keeping it fair, keeping it consistent. It is gone against, you know.
The cities didn't go for it.
I'm in favor of looking at it, but I don't know if it's something that we want to do today. Like that. I think that we need to really kind of think about the whole long picture of it, and I think we can. Just like we did with the, make sure that we don't just.
So let's put it on the agenda for next week.
There we go, because I think that we do our best when we have a chance to.
Because I think Amy's right, I mean, fair and consistent, I mean, I think that has to be.
Right.
The key.
We'll be specific with the language.
Right, right. I think there's too many.
Get information from Jack or Colin on how we want to word it.
I mean, literally, it's just removing the twelve.
I think you're right, I think you're right. Just striking that and be done.
Yeah.
So there'll be any complications with anybody that didn't get that, that recently retired.
Well, that's what I'm saying, since the person that did get it, there have been.
I hate to change the rule because of my mistake, though. Because that was what happened there, there was a mistake.
But I know there was other elected officials that really don't understand that twelve hundred hour minimum anyways.
Well, I get that, and that's like, like Gene brought up, it should be changed in the handbook then.
I, I'm guessing at one point time someone was injured or someone.
Yeah.
Worked for part-time, and the supervisor's like, I can't believe we gotta pay that all out when they hardly even work, we're just gonna stick a number in.
Yeah.
They can work that many hours.
Probably in the seventies somewhere.
I'm not saying I'm not open to it, I'm just.
Blaming your mother?
Again.
Your mom?
I just don't want more issues.
I understand. We, then we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Fair and consistent.
Absolutely. I, I'm all about that.
Because of mistakes.
Give us a week to think about it.
We're gonna change the holidays, because I think this is a mistake that the states have to get pays off like candy.
Well, boy.
Here we go. Appreciate you bringing that, and let's get it cleaned up and addressed.
But their mistakes don't affect our consistency.
No. Let's, uh, talk about it next week. Make sure we have all of our dots on our i's and our t's.
And, and make sure that they're, if we're changing it. Just one item in the handbook at a time, I mean, is that gonna create any problems potential? We see the potential.
We've done some small things throughout the last couple of years, so it's not that big of a deal to do an amendment.
Yeah, we just did the, um, what your meals are and stuff, I mean.
Right, which doesn't get.
Stuff a lot, so. It's not that big of a deal.
It was a waste of time.
To strike out those words, if that would be fine.
Just check on that. Make sure there's not gonna be any conflict with an HR deal.
Yeah, got it, got it.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I always like knowing what I'm gonna have to do for.
Morgan is willing to.
Okay. Is there any, uh, further discussion on that topic? Well, thank you. Okay. Moving on, citizens input. Don't motion us away. Is there any citizens input, Mr. Median? Does any of our department heads have, Chris?
Yeah, just, I don't know how much you remember from budget time, but we did get our second truck. They're picking it up right now, actually. So if you probably don't remember, but previous budget, we had a truck in there.
Yep.
That we didn't get because it took too long. So we got a truck like three months ago. For this, we have trucks in two different years, executive years, one we're in now, the previous one. So both trucks are now in, and we had saved. I don't know, forty-two or forty-four thousand I left in last year's budget, because. It's going to have to come into this year's budget because the truck wasn't here last year's budget. I'll just let you know that both trucks are now here, so.
So are you saying a budget amendment?
Yeah, it would have been in the.
I gave back like forty-some thousand in the general fund to pay.
Right.
For that truck flash, because we, we, obviously, we.
Okay, I, I, I have a.
So we just got.
Yeah, I said, both trucks stay within three months.
I just wanted to make sure, I was thinking he was saying what he was saying.
As far as that goes, does that put you in immediate budget shortfall?
March, April.
So like, well, the first one got, like, this one's carbonized gray.
Oh, yeah?
They, they limit you on, uh, you only have like nine choices of colors.
Okay.
Forget it, though.
Yeah, I, I did, I had my idea we were gonna get the second one.
Just a few.
This year or not, so I was happy to get it in the.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Anybody, Martha, you came over here, did you just come to see us because you missed us or?
Were you up there with Paul? Yes. I'm limited to find another day.
Got you. Okay. Anybody in Zoom, Cindy, you have your hand up, I see that. Could you?
I missed it earlier, why are you guys selling popcorn?
Okay, I'll try to explain it. They do a popcorn fundraiser every year. And, uh, Dave and Kyle have kind of been the, the chef's extraordinary in the past, and, uh. What it does is the, the first one that we'll be doing tomorrow is actually the funds that are, that are gained in that. Actually go to the Christmas crusade for the, this, this, this unfortunate, our less fortunate kids in our community.
PB is putting that on.
And PB puts it on, I think they've kind of worked with the radio station and all law enforcement Crawford County. Yeah, all law enforcement Crawford County and the radio station kind of work together on that. And then the other, the other one will be. On the twenty-ninth of November, starting at nine, and it'll go on, but it's actually for TAP. TAP was just in here two weeks ago, was it two weeks ago? TAP was in here two weeks ago and, and they kind of, uh. All the work and everything that they put in, we thought it'd be kind of nice to have a fun drive for them as well, so like bring cans, you know.
Non-perishable.
Non-perishables, there you go, non-perishables or money, obviously, is always, always accepted, but that, that's what that fundraiser will go for is TAP. So that's what that. Yep.
That sounds like a great idea. So, so you're selling it in the courthouse?
Yeah, it'll be down in the conference room downstairs.
The public's welcome.
Great, okay, thank you.
I think we're just leaving it in the hallway.
Just be in the hallway. We'll be in the hallway, we won't be in the conference room, but it's down on the bottom in the first floor.
Okay, if I'm in town, I'll stop by.
All right, sounds great, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in Zoom land? See any more hand? So I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Nozard makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Mo Bower seconds, all in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose, no, cheer with aye.
There's one more small stack you gotta sign.
I was gonna ask, did I get them all?
Not many more. You're good, you signed them, I think, right? Do you know the amount, though? Can you find out? DZ, he might know it, I don't know if he know it or not. Louise was asking about it, and I don't know if she remembers, so.
I just put enough in there to where it pops, right?
And we may or may not do the candy bar thing, so.
I just get popcorn for the wrestling tournament on Saturday.